All right, good evening and welcome to the Monday, April 9th, meeting of the Radnor Township Board of Commissioners. Please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Prior to this meeting, the Board met in executive session for matters of legal and personnel. Consent agenda. So, I'm a little out of practice, aren't I? This evening, may I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Second? Oh, are there any items anyone would like to pull first from the consent agenda? No? Okay. Is there any Commissioner comment on the consent agenda? Any staff comment? Any public comment? Okay. So then I will go ahead and call the vote for approval of the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven, nothing. Okay. We are on to public participation. Good evening and welcome. Please.
I haven't been here before. So my name's Anajit Serene. My wife and I, we live on 205 Strafford, here in Wayne. The reason I'm here is because we're having a lot of challenges with a builder who's building properties around us. And Jim Higgins suggested that I come here and speak to this. And I've exchanged some emails with Bob over there and with Steve Norsini as well. But we bought this property a year and a half ago from Benson Homes and it's just been a real difficult experience. But just to get to the point about some of the specifics, he's still finishing the houses on Eagle Road, but there's all kinds of water that's running off from those properties onto ours and beyond. Our driveway's a sheet of ice in the winters. This guy's unreachable. I don't know what the arrangement he has with the town in terms of the permits and such that he has to build the properties there, but I don't think water should be coming from his property onto ours, particularly since we're trying to do, you know, stuff on our own on the property as well. It's not just that, there's other things. He's, I think he's supposed to build a sidewalk. I think that's the understanding he has with the town on Strafford. Hasn't done that yet and it's just a pile of mud, all the way down. And we're kind of in this situation where we're trying to like do something with a property and we're beholden to this guy to do the things that he wants to do and he's unreachable, doesn't return calls. Some of this, I understand, is a private legal matter and we're trying to pursue this through the legal channel as well. But I'm also here because I don't know if there's anything that the town can do in terms of its relationship with the builder and what they've agreed to. Because some of what he tells us is, well, this has to do with the town. For example, there's a whole bunch of silt fencing all over the property, or our property, that he says, well, the town says, we can't remove it until the entire project is complete, even though it's on our property. When we've asked the town, the town, I mean, we spoke to Steve and others here, we're told, no, no, that's not true at all. So there's just this ongoing disconnect, there's a lot of deception and lying frankly, from this guy as well. And not to mention, I think, challenges our neighbors are having as well. I don't want to use too much of your time, but I thought I'd bring it up here and see what kind of recourse there might be for a situation like this.
Well, these, correct me if I'm wrong, these are the same guys who took out all those trees, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, all right. So.
Yeah.
Is there, I mean, it sounds like this is an enforcement issue, is that, is there anything that we can do?
And Steve is work, Steve is on this with them. I know we've held back quite a bit of money on this. I know it's extremely frustrating for you and we understand what's going on here. This is one that I know Steve will be reaching out to John on this issue here. We're not going to abandon you on this one because this is, it's bad for what you've had to put up with. I gotta watch what I say because I know there's legal ramifications, but the township won't back down. It will stand behind you on this because there are a lot of issues that you should not have to put up with. There are a lot of corrections that need to be made in this particular area, especially with your home there. So this is one that Steve's pretty much run his course with this builder. There are other projects they have in town here that I know John has been involved with again too, that they haven't done their part, especially with repaving and other issues. So this'll be something here about whether or not the Board can take action with preventing them from doing any further construction in the township until they make right with your property and other properties within the township and make corrections to township-owned roads and that. So this is one that we definitely will be working with you on this. I understand your frustration. It is bad. And you shouldn't have to put up with that. And I know Steve's doing everything he can within his legal means on this, but you're absolutely right. And we'll be working with you on that.
Bob, did the township collect escrows for this project?
We did.
Okay. So could you just kind of walk through just quickly what the process is? So private homeowner contracts with private builder, builder's responsible for doing some types of off-site sidewalks and so forth. How do we get to the point where this gentleman gets this, there's a CFO provided to the builder if we're not finished, if we're not actually finished? How does that work?
Yeah. Let me just walk through it, Matt. The township has development agreements with Benson on both projects and there's been issues with both projects. This gentleman has a contract for the home that he built for you that involves the four walls and everything else that goes with that and parking. We're not involved in that. I'm not sure whether there's any issues with that. I know Steve has told me there's been some issues with stormwater. There was an issue with the sanitary sewer trench. And what happens is, as that, he does the public improvements, the stormwater plants trees, does the water hookup, the sewer hookup, he asks for money to be released from the township. We inspect it. If it's not done right or is a problem, we don't release the money. So there's an enforcement mechanism in the development agreement that if the developer's not complying with the plan and the agreement, then Steve knows what the next step is. I mean, we can default them, we can take the money and then sometimes we become the contractor, which in most cases, we don't want to become the contractor. I don't know what the level of issue is currently, but I mean, that's the way this will go. If he's not building per the plan, building per the building code, or the development agreement.
Right. So just as it relates to the township's responsibility to provide a certificate of occupancy, shouldn't all of those requirements been met before they?
In most cases, sometimes the township will issue a temporary CO. For example, in the wintertime, the only thing that has to be done is the grass sod has to be put down in the winter.
Right.
You're not going to hold somebody up occupying a dwelling unit because of that. Then there'll be money held back. That gets done at the, by Kevin's department, Community Development. I don't know, I haven't talked to this gentleman yet and Steve has sent me some updates and asked me some questions over the last month or so. He has the development agreement, he knows what we can and can't do. Are you in your, do you have a CO?
We're in the House.
You're in the House.
Gentlemen, I don't mean to cut this off, but we do have public comment and I don't mean to, do we think we could take this offline and you guys could meet and we could talk about this?
Right.
That would be great. Would you be able to coordinate with the staff and come in and meet?
We will.
And with Commissioner, this is a first ward?
It is.
Okay.
Bob, just let me know.
We will.
All right.
Okay. Great. I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut it off, but thank you very much.
Hi. Debbie Singer. I saw on the agenda that you are, you know, possibly hiring three more policemen. So I thought it'd be okay if I brought this up. I'm hoping it's, maybe it doesn't have to be a done deal. We were told Andy Block was retiring and that wasn't true. So I don't know if it was his idea or yours, but either way, I think we should have been told that, you know, something like maybe you couldn't come to an agreement. This way, the public could come out to support him and kind of urge the Board to do whatever it takes to keep him. You know, he's an icon here, no question about it. And a dedicated public servant, you know, you won't find a better one. And, you know, I think that he was valuable to the township. I know I felt safer knowing he was here and I was looking forward to him becoming chief. So, you know, maybe the public can hear me and they'll come out and, you know, if he hasn't gotten another job, maybe he can do whatever it takes to get him back. Thank you.
That was a unique perspective in light of that there's three new policemen potentially being hired. Leslie Morgan, first ward, Farm Road. I have two things, because I'm not sure I can stay till the end of the meeting, that I want to discuss. And I may be premature in some of my thoughts because I can't stay to here at the end. So if I'm wrong on some of them, I excuse myself. First of, is that in January, when I said some of the things why I come to these meetings to get done, I'm very appreciative that you're going to be bidding professional services. That was one of my ideas and I really appreciate that you took that up. And I think it's a good thing that people who come to the meetings regularly, and we would like more, obviously, that they are heard sometimes by the Board and sometimes things work and that's great. I look forward to seeing what the results are and to getting in a, you know, an annual or almost annual situation where you are looking at those costs and potentially making government more efficient. It was not to cast dispersions on anybody that we currently have and they may be retained, but it was good that you voted almost unanimously. I think it was almost unanimously on that. So one of my other ideas was the definition of some of the things that led to maybe what we would call a too-good deal for the developer at 145 King of Prussia. And the big thing was the mitigation on the traffic, which no doubt there's going to be more traffic. And one of my ideas was the redefinition of existing conditions. And I didn't know where we stood on there, but I just wanted to remind you, all of you, whatever board, subboards you sit on, could you look and see if maybe you want to take another look at the definition of existing conditions? And just as a back way, what happened was, in my mind, with my experience, that they took, their existing conditions is exactly what you think it is. Even if you work in nonprofit all your life and you've never heard of a real estate development, it is what is on the land as it stands today. And what happened in this project was they pontificated about what could be done potentially under what we call buy right. In development, there's never really anything buy right because you're a governing board and there might be things you don't like by even a buy right plan that you would ask for conditions on. So there's never a buy right plan. So existing conditions, what they argued was, well, we could build all office, so the differential between all office and what they're building now is negligible, so ergo, I don't have to do any improvements on the roads. And that's what your code says. They didn't think that in the beginning. That's why they brought a team of lawyers and they asked for relief from that. In 10 days, Amy got involved and said, no, all you have to do is list what the conditions would be and what improvements you would have to make. It was a list, literally like paper, a list, okay? Obviously, that is not what the intent of the code is. So what I've asked for you to do is to go back, look at your definition of existing conditions, follow it through the code and see where obviously existing conditions are, the building that's on there or the non-building that's on there, and how the beta between what the new plan is, if you're going to give somebody a zoning code change, which is very valuable, and they should do mitigation for traffic. Everybody else gets it done, so let's get it done. That's what I say. The second thing, I know that Rich has something on the agenda about the investigation of Page Six and the ethics, and I'm not going to bore people. I haven't been that involved in it, but I've been saying, since I saw that on the agenda, where's John Galt? And people didn't really get my humor. But John Galt was sort of a mythical figure in a book by Anne Rann. And so I've been saying, where's John Galt? Because nobody knew where he really was, if he even existed or if he was just an idea. But because Jim Bowdre and Doug Mccone have ceased to come to the meetings, and I know Mccone pretty well, he used to come all the time, but he no longer comes to the meetings for whatever reason, but he lodged the complaint. And I think it was to do with the election. I think most smart people would know that. And so I did a timeline. So the election was 11/7 this year. He entered the ethics complaint 10/20 and it says from Council Rice's report that he simultaneously released it to the media. So he released, he filed the complaint and released it to the media on 10/20. The blackout date for the media is about two weeks before an election. So we're 17 days, maybe a few weekends in there. It was probably 14 days on the dot and they needed to get that complaint in. And I think it was purposeful. And I'm very sad that Doug, who's a nice man, I've sat with him on voting day many times, we've gotten along, that he is hiding from this. I invite him tonight to come and tell us where he got that information. I don't know Mr. Bowdre, but I know Doug a little and I know Doug to be a gentleman. And this is very unusual for him, so he must be hiding something or very afraid to disclose the name. So the media release again-
One minute, Ms. Morgan.
Yes, I will. I'm just trying to do my two things in the beginning of the meeting. So we all know that real people of character, which I think that Doug Mccone is, they don't hide. And I would say them again, to come on in, since they've been absent as soon as they filed it on purpose to tamper with an election. And I do think it was election tampering. And I think most people with a sixth grade education would figure that one out, even if they don't know who John Galt is. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Good evening.
Hi, Helen Martin, seventh ward. I agree with what Leslie had said. I mean, do any of you worry that maybe Jim Bowdre is being blackmailed? Or what is the reason that he's not speaking up about this? There's obviously an issue and we need to find out who leaked the document. It's very simple. The investigation would be very simple to just go to the people who had the document and who submitted it. And also, Mr. Nagel, I just wanted to say, if you had any advice for me, you could just give it to me directly as opposed to ambushing people that I know in public to offer my, the advice that you had for me. And thirdly, as far as the traffic at 145 King of Prussia, one of the things that Sarah Armstrong had brought up was if we're basing the traffic on the traffic that they're saying from their reports, that you could offer, go back a year later and do some sort of fine if it's over. And I think that's a really good idea. I don't know if that's something that you guys have entertained at all, but I just thought that she had a great idea with that. And I look forward to Mr. Booker's memo or release being added tonight. I hope that you're all on board with adding that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Dan Sherry Wayne. Just quick, an opening comment about time management, Madam President. What Commissioner Marshall was endeavoring to do with the first gentleman who spoke tonight, I was finding very educational and important. And to kind of cut that off, I thought was inappropriate. If people are being informed about how a process works in Radnor Township and was spoken from the audience, this is a developer that has been the topic of at least a couple of different meetings, there's no reason really to just hurry that along, okay? That should take priority. Couple meetings ago, you allocated, seemed like, more than a half an hour for Sean Farley to just battle on about how he didn't believe Villanova was truly nonprofit and bringing up stuff like t-shirts. Had no idea why we'd ever allocate that much at a public meeting for something like that. So if a fellow Commissioner is engaging, solicitor, the manager, speaking about, I think, Steve Norsini, that's important for the township to know. And I would hope that other members of this Board, if the President tries to cut that off, will in turn reprimand or at least redirect so that we can have that dialogue. My comments tonight deal with that report that was released involving John Rice and the investigation. It's difficult to even call it an investigation, once one reads that document into Exhibit Six and how that got out, okay? Demonstrates that Commissioner Booker's approach backed by other people on the sport to go out for RFP was long overdue, long overdue. Anybody looking at that report had to come to the conclusion that the solicitor had failed, absolutely failed. He knew who ended up with the documents, Jim Bowdre and Doug Mccone, who is, neither of whom are here tonight, at least I didn't see either of them. He also knew who would have had access to those documents. Okay? That includes the members of the ethics board. And reading that report, you see that the solicitor did not even interview them. Instead, he talked to their attorney. And amazingly, that attorney thought that his clients didn't do anything wrong. End of the matter, I guess. Would it have been so hard to submit affidavits? Okay? I'll give you just by one example, okay? At a videotape meeting, Martin Heldring stated, and this is regarding the investigation of Elaine Paul Schaefer, that the ethics board had voted unanimously to proceed without an attorney. I've never misused the phrase "voted unanimously" in my entire life. I don't know how anybody could misspeak. Turns out, that was not true. Didn't happen. And nevertheless, our solicitor doing an investigation to find out how a document that was supposed to be part of a confidential preliminary inquiry not only is leaked, but is weaponized against Commissioner Booker on the eve of an election. And what, that election was decided by three votes? Two votes go the other way, different second ward representative. This township deserved a more serious investigation than this. We paid more than $6,000, according to John Rice. And it is interesting, as Ms. Morgan brings up, that Mr. Bowdre and Mr. Mccone won't talk. You know who did talk, according to the report? The disgusting criminal pervert who's being held for trial. He talked and denied he had anything to do with it. So again, Mr. Mccone, if you're watching this meeting, be advised that a person who's alleged to have a possession of nightmarish child pornography is being more forthcoming than you. But despite that, this township should have investigated more thoroughly. Hasn't investigated. This matter is still unresolved. Nevertheless, you're still having an ethics investigation against one of your members right now. How is this appropriate? You haven't plugged the leak. How can you encourage people to come forward with information, either favorable or disfavorable to a politician-
One minute, Mr. Sherry.
Thank you. If you can't guarantee that there's going to be confidentiality in the preliminary inquiry is mandated by local law. It's a disgrace. At a minimum, since you announced tonight that you were meeting in executive session, I hope that one of the personnel matters is whether or not you're going to get a new solicitor in here far more expeditiously. How can John Rice come to you and say, I can handle another matter, when he couldn't handle this? You know who the documents got to, Bowdre and Mccone. You know that only a limited number of people could have had access to those documents. And yet Rice, even though he was given an extension of time, supposed to be 30 days, he then somehow claimed that was arbitrary, wasn't. Gave him more time, still couldn't figure it out. I'd like to hear somebody up on this dais give a throaty defense of John Rice's work product. I think it's a disgrace. The last question I'll ask, with my remaining probably 10 seconds is-
That's, your time is actually up.
Thank you. Well, I'll make it very quick then. In the report, it states that Bowdre and Mccone would not talk to the solicitor, apparently upon advice of counsel, because they thought Rich Booker could sue them. Never mind that tort's already occurred. The name of the attorney that purportedly gave that advice, or Mccone and Bowdre are relying on, is not stated in the solicitor's report. So I would hope that somebody up on this dais would ask the solicitor in public tonight, who gave that advice? If he spoke directly to Mccone and Bowdre, who did they say their attorney was? Or if he didn't speak to them and instead went through their attorney, the name of that attorney. I want to know who gave that advice, that speaking to this Board about how Mccone and Bowdre, who were identified at the time as being Democratic committeemen, how they came into possession of a document-
Mr. Sherry, that is six minutes.
Thanks. This is important. How that is somehow opening them up to further liability to Rich Booker. So please, somebody ask that direct question, the name of the attorney representing Bowdre and Mccone. Thanks.
Thank you. Any additional public comment? Okay. Seeing none. Item number three. Oh, I just had one thing I wanted to say in public comment. I just wanted to thank our police as well as all of our staff here. With the win of Villanova last week, pretty much everyone in this township building was working overtime to make sure that it was an orderly and fun celebration for everyone in the town and to make sure that our citizens were protected. And I just want to thank our staff and our Police Chief, Colerulo, Chris Flanagan, Bob Zankowski, and everyone who led the team. Officer George Smith, who runs our Emergency Operations Center, for doing such an outstanding job and for making sure that everything ran smoothly and that everyone was able to enjoy something so special for our township. So with that, on to item number three. Commissioner Clark, we gonna pull that one?
Yeah, the next one's appointment to various boards and commissions. I thought we were going to interview someone and appoint them, we did not. And so that item is moot at this point. So I think we can just move on.
On to committee reports. Personnel Administration, we have conditional offer of employment to three potential Radnor Township police officers. Who is going to speak on this for us? Commissioner, oh, sorry.
I would, Madam President, with your permission. Our authorized strength in the Radnor Police Department is 45 and 1, I being the one. Currently, we have 41 officers. In those 41, one has been injured on duty long-term. He had a couple of surgeries, his return is questionable at this moment. In the past six months, we had three officers leave. Steven Solinsky left, he was a patrol officer, he took a job with another department. Joshua Alexander moved out of state, so he handed in his resignation. And Andy Block retired, I believe, on February 28th. We're asking the Board's permission to respectfully allow a conditional offer of hire for three individuals that we interviewed. They went through all the required background checks, testing, and the final interview was with Mr. Zankowski, myself, and another, a couple other members of the department in the past two weeks, and they all successfully made it past what we call the manager's interview. Just to give you a little background, one of the individuals, his name is Joshua McCann, he's a 23-year-old individual. Another individual is Patrick Jennings, who is 25 years old. And the third individual, who is actually currently a Villanova police officer, her name is Caitlin Kamralowicz, if I pronounced that right, she's 26 years old. And also significantly, that I think the public should know, eight years ago, when the township manager started here, we had one female officer. This will actually bring us up to five female officers, so we're getting there. We're trying to include more diversity and reflect more the township that we serve. Even if the Board does approve the hiring of these three, it would bring us up to 44, which is still below our authorized strength, but that is what we're asking respectfully right now, ma'am.
Would you mind, Bill, when you say conditional offer, what exactly does that mean?
A conditional offer, if the Board approves that we offer a job to these individuals based on your approval, the Board's approval, the majority, we would notify, Lieutenant Dieter would notify these candidates that they have to receive a physical examination and a psychiatric evaluation. They're the final two steps that are only given with a conditional offer of employment. And if they successfully pass that, then hopefully at the next meeting, they would be sworn in as officers. And they would be probationary officers.
All right. So I will go ahead and ask for a motion on conditional offer of employment to three potential Radnor Township police officers.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Commissioner, a comment?
Bill, why would we replace Andy Block, who was deputy superintendent, with a first-year officer who would be a patrol officer? Doesn't seem like that would be a one-for-one. Do we need to have that third patrol officer?
Yes, Commissioner, I think it would be feasible because Andy did start out as a civil service employee. He was a sworn member of the Radnor Police Department. When he advanced through the ranks, that minimized the number of patrol officers that we've had. And when he took over the duties as deputy superintendent, he gave up some of the duties, for lack of a better term, that he was doing prior to that, some of which was patrol and some of it was on-call. Also, it would be financially advantageous for the township to hire a new officer that would work 12-hour shifts at a less of a pay rate.
So how much of Andy Block's time was on patrol?
When he was deputy superintendent, it was minimal. So that's even more so why we would need someone to replace him as well. Because when he got promoted, that position went unfilled.
As part of the reorganization, the organizational chart, that was one of the plans- As part of the reorganization, the organizational chart, that was one of the plans that one, one of those positions would leave, we would fill that back with a patrol officer. So this is just part of the process. As those individuals leave and retire and rank, then within the department, those individuals move up in those positions, and then those are filled with a police patrol officer.
But Andy was, when was Andy promoted to deputy superintendent? That was months, that was months and months ago, right? So why didn't we, why didn't we replace, why didn't we replace it then?
Uh, we could, just like we could have replaced the other officers that quit, but it's up to the manager's call. He wanted to hold off, whether for financial reasons or until he felt the need to hire additional people. But we've had vacancies for at least six months, and like I mentioned, our authorized strength is 45, and we have not been at 45 during my tenure here.
And forgive me, Superintendent, I'm pushing back on this. I just want to make sure we have everything understood. And I guess we are authorized for 45, but we haven't been at 45 for years. And we were, we had less people. I thought we were going to be reducing some hours because Villanova brought on several officers to patrol their area, thereby relieving us of at least some duties with respect to land in Villanova.
Uh, sir, we actually, I did a analysis of our crime stats for the last couple of years. And although Villanova does handle on-campus some of the incidents that normally we would have responded to, the truth of the matter is, we are up in assaults. We are up, as you know, because your word got hit hard, in motor vehicle thefts. Last year, we had 10 stolen autos, excuse me, in 2016, we had 10 stolen autos. In 2017, the number ended up to 21. We're up in simple assaults, we're up in criminal mischief, and drug violations. We are up significantly in the last three years, because now we are starting to enforce more drugs because of the introduction of the more harmful effects that heroin and other narcotics are having on our population. So even though Villanova's handling their area, there are other issues that are affecting Radnor Township that cause calls for just as much police service from Radnor officers.
Are these new officers related to the Drug Task Force, which we talked about for, over the prior months? Is this, this is something different?
These are only officers that are replacing officers that left through attrition. Andy Block retired, one left to go to another department, and one quit because he moved out of state. Has nothing to do with the Drug Task Force or anything like that.
Chief, can I just, can you just clarify? So your number on 41 officers, is that, are we 44, and then the three officers left? So that brought us to 41? Are we 41 and the three officers left, and now we're 38?
No, we are currently 41 and one superintendent. We will be up to 44 if the Board allows us to offer a conditional offer of employment to the three individuals that qualify.
So we had the personnel discussion last week that went into executive session, and there were proposals made for the police department. Where do you value these three officers? Is it better to have them come in in this current role, or some of the proposed additions that were made last, last week?
You always need them to come in at this current role, because patrol is the backbone of any police department. And until you handle all the sectors in this community, respond to those radio calls, and provide public safety on a daily basis, everything else has to wait. That's, that has to be a priority.
Okay.
Um, if we do this, if we hire these three people, and then we hire three more for a Drug Task Force, we're going to be over our 45. Correct?
That's correct, but that's why this is, that's only proposed. The Board still has to decide. There's no commitment. There's no guarantee. We aren't looking to hire that. That's only for discussion. That's a proposal to the Board. So there's nothing written in stone on that. That's only a proposal to the Board for that.
Bill, my question is, how does this affect overtime? I mean, are, because we are short-staffed, so to speak, are we paying more in overtime? Or if we hire three new police, would we be paying less? Is there some kind of a net-net when it comes to what this would do to the budget?
Whenever you have a shortage in personnel, overtime is required to fulfill or to fill that gap. Now, officers do make overtime, even if you have full complement. Some of our overtime is reimbursable when they work extra-duty details and things like that, or if they go to court. If you have an officer working a 12-hour shift, and they get done at 7:00 a.m., and they have to go to court at 9:00 a.m., of course, that's coming to be overtime. But when you have less people, there's an absolute increase in overtime, and also there's a fatigue issue for our officers. During the Villanova issue, we had officers working 18-hour days. Well, you know, you can't have officers doing that on a regular basis, because you don't have enough people. There are times now where the four sectors, the way our patrol is split up for the four quadrants of the, of the town, there are times when certain sectors go uncovered, because we're working three and one, meaning three officers and one supervisor. In fact, I have Sergeant Pinto here. He could attest to that, because many a time, he becomes another patrol officer responding to radio calls, because we're, we lack the manpower.
I have a, I have a quick question. So, so this is already budgeted. We have in the budget for these officers, correct? Yes, Bill shaking his head. Okay, and let me ask, Bill, do you mind, so certainly, you know, it's been noted quite a bit lately of the increased need from the schools. The schools have been, you know, asking us for support in various areas. Is this, you know, having these officers, does that allow us to better respond to those needs, which I know have been in addition to what normal, has been normal patrol?
Madam President, response is very subjective, because it would depend on the nature of the call. However, I, I will let you know that Lieutenant Dietrich and Deputy Flanagan have been doing safety inspections and threat assessments at different schools, and it's been indicated that school, Radnor School District, is very interested in hiring school resource officers that seems to be the national trend. If that's the case, we would not be able to fulfill that responsibility on this current number of officers that we have. Because a school resource officer would have to be there at least eight hours a day before, before children report on, and then at least an hour after they report off, because of other extracurricular activities. So the number we have now, we could not fill a position of a school resource officer. But to answer your question in a long-winded way, I apologize. I think we have enough officers to respond to emergency situations, but we don't have enough officers to dedicate or devote to a school resource, resource officer position.
Okay, so these officers are, you know, not to be school resource officers. I understand that. I think that's a lot, larger conversation to have at a later time.
That is absolutely correct. These officers will be on patrol and serving the people in the community, answering 911 calls, checking houses, doing safety checks, making arrests, the whole bit.
I'm just talking about in, I mean, I know that when my boys were at Eithin, the, there used to be an officer that would regularly kind of come through, walk through the school, you know, partially so that, you know, the, you know, to check things out and for the staff, and also so the kids could get to know and not feel fearful of officers. So is there more demand from the other schools for things like that to occur? I mean, we're not just talking about Radnor schools. We've got, you know, how many schools here in our community?
Yes, and they've been going to all the schools. You name it, Agnes Irwin, Barak Academy, they're going to all the schools, and we still do those walkthroughs that you're talking about. Not as, not as often as we'd like to, because of our personnel, and, and Mr. White just reminded me, too. We also have a sergeant, as you noted, had a massive heart attack. So his position has to be filled, and that's an overtime position, because we have to take a supervisor from another area and pay coverage in order for that platoon to have a, have a supervisor working. You need supervisors. You just can't have a bunch of officers working without supervision.
Okay. Does anyone have any additional questions on the commissioners? Okay, any staff comment? Any public comment? Okay, then I'm going to go ahead and call the vote. All those in favor of conditional offer of employment for three potential Radnor Township police officers, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion passes seven, nothing. Okay. On to discussion and possible motion regarding setting a date for Sunshine Act and open records training. I am going to pass this to Commissioner Abel.
Yep. So the last meeting, I offered up for discussion to bring somebody in to provide Sunshine, the Training on Sunshine Act and open, open, open records. And the discussion kind of delved into who and when. We had one option to use Solicitor Rice's firm, and I can't remember about nine billable hours for the two, the two training sessions. Since then, I've looked at other options. One of the options that I think is appealing, at least to me, is that we go through the state open records office. They would come in, they, they go around the state, and they provide this training, and it's free of cost, which I think that is probably, you know, would gain some, some votes here on, on the dais. The one, the one training that we talked about that they don't cover is the MPC. I think, I think Luke, you had mentioned that training. So if we want to go that route, we would probably still have to look, possibly to Solicitor Rice's firm, or if anyone else, if anyone else has other options.
Well, actually, we belong to the PSATS organization, which is the state organization of township supervisors. And they offer some wonderful training. We should explore what they would charge, or if they would not, if it'd be free, because we're members, for both these trainings. I know I've taken several other courses over the years. John, when did we do, we did open records, what, about eight years ago, I guess, was the last time, didn't we? Remember, we had all the boards and commissions, as well as commissioners?
Right. There was a, there was a large meeting of all the boards and commissions. We talked about, right after the Open Records Act, the new one, in '09. And then we also talked about Sunshine Act. There was some discussion about who that would apply to and who it would not. And Commissioner Abel, you talked about nine hours from me, or?
Well, I thought the last, when we discussed this at the last meeting, you said for the three training sessions with you and a couple colleagues, it would be a total of nine hours.
Um, yeah, I'm not sure. I think we talked about doing maybe three- or four-hour sessions. We'd had no discussion about whether we would be billing it or not. That's my only-
Okay.
-comment.
I apologize for that, then.
Typically, we don't. But that's, you know, that's up. I also suggested that there be some training on the municipality's planning code, which I think there's a fairly significant misunderstanding as to what townships can do and not do under that state law. But, I mean, we can submit some kind, once you pick some dates and what topics, we can submit a proposal, you know, for that also. But PSATS, who has a convention the weekend of the 22nd or 23rd in Hershey, Pennsylvania, they have an annual convention. You can always sign up and go there that weekend. They do training on everything. That's mainly townships of the second class, which are most of the townships in Pennsylvania. It's geared towards that, but it covers everything. They also do training around the state on a regular basis, which we get information on. So I don't know whether Bob gets that information here, but there is training that they do four or five places around the state.
Yeah, Bob's forwarded some of those emails to us.
And my intent would, the training would be held here, so it would be open to the Board, other boards, as well as residents, if they want to come participate.
Jake, you're talking about, so the Sunshine for all the boards, yes, and-
Right.
-open records.
For everybody.
Yes, for everybody. And then municipal, the municipal code for everyone as well?
Uh, you know, I don't-
Or just for the commissioners? Because I know I'm going to a training for that in a couple weeks. I'm signed up for that. One of the emails Bob sent.
Yeah, I mean, if, if we can make it available to everybody, I don't know why we wouldn't.
Yeah, I just want, is it, I guess it's applicable, yeah.
Uh, and, and just to go back, in terms of timing, so we've got a special election coming up on May 15th. I don't know that it makes sense to do it before May 15th, because we'll have at least one new board member, so we'd probably, instead of having to do it twice, we would want to hold off till after the special election. And then going forward, I think it makes sense to do every two years after an election, within 60 days of that election, 60 days of the Board being reconstituted.
Does anyone else have any comment?
I guess, are we thinking weekend, weekday? What are we thinking?
Uh, I, I think we're probably in the same boat, where weekdays are, are better.
Say Saturday morning is out.
Yeah, right.
That's not happening for me.
It sounds like we, we need to put more thought into what, how we want the structure to be. Do we want to hire a lawyer to come in and give us personalized instruction for a few hours, which I would recommend? Or are you going to pursue one of these, one of the supervisory group for municipalities and their general training? One would be canned, one would be custom. So what is your thought on that? I don't think we got a clear decision on that. But it seems to me that we should get counsel, we should get, if not John's firm, somebody who'd recommend, let's have somebody come and meet with the Board and spend a couple hours and go through it. I think that that might be the best way to do it, personally. Or are you saying, well, we don't want to do that. Let's just do the, the canned training from the municipal supervisors group that we belong to?
Why not, why not the state?
Or the state? I don't know. Is there a state one, too? I don't, is there a state-
Yeah, so the open records office.
The open records office. Yeah, I mean, again, to me, that would be similar to my first alternative, which is we hire a lawyer to give training on a real, on a customized basis, as opposed to a canned training package. That's, so, again, my recommendation would be to pursue either somebody from the state or some other lawyer to come in and go through and meet with us, and meet with us as a group and go through these issues.
Yeah, I mean, I, personally, I prefer lowest cost possible to do this.
The-
Cost versus quality.
The director, the, the Office of Open Records does do training out in the community. I don't know whether the head person or, but they will do just open records training. So, I mean, you can make an inquiry there. There are the people that are dealing with thousands and thousands of these, and there's a lot of court decisions.
Well, that's open, open, you're talking about-
Open record.
Right, right-to-know requests.
Right, right-to-know requests.
Right-to-know requests. And we were thinking more, I think, of Sunshine Act and how it applies to operations of this Board, I think, was, and Jake, you, you know, you correct me if I'm wrong. Is that what you were, that's what I understood it to be more of. I don't, I don't-
Yeah, and my conversation with the open records office is they would provide both Sunshine and open records.
It sounds like we got some more homework to do before we discuss it further.
I would say, Jake, maybe, you know, do we want to put together, you know, what they can offer, kind of a list? And, I mean, and I don't know, is it as important that this is customized to us? I mean, to me, Sunshine is Sunshine. It's, whether it's our Board or the Planning Commission or, you know, and the municipal code, I mean, it is what it is. So I don't know, do we need to, you know, look at and have some, maybe some real numbers? Like, look at maybe what it would cost from John's firm to do it, or another, you know, and then what? And then I guess we decide, as you said, Commissioner Booker, is it, you know?
Well, I would-
I don't know if we need something customized or not.
I, I would say, if Jake is interested, that we should schedule and make the commitment to do it, and then make the ultimate choice once Jake or whoever we put in charge is comfortable that the, the state has the, the training. I think, you said you did, you did talk with the state, and you think that that, that would be the appropriate training? Would be okay with that?
Uh, yes. Yep, I had a, a conversation. They were willing to work with our schedule, and they could provide both training sessions.
And, and the expense, I guess, would be their, just their expenses, right? Just to bring them out, or would we pay, be paying an hourly?
I don't think there are any expenses involved.
Well, let's do that, then. I mean, that's, I was just trying to, I was, I was, I wasn't, I wasn't sure which way, which, which one was the one you were, so that, that sounds fine to me.
So, so- I'm advocating for the- So, I'm advocating for the open records office to provide both training sessions, and that we do it within 30 days of the special election.
So then?
Or 30 days after the special election.
What, are you saying only for this board? Or are you talking about the boards and commissions, too?
I'd say everybody.
So it would be open to everybody.
So I'm going to say 30 days after the special election, that you, that puts you smack dab in the middle of the graduation week and everything. That's June, what, June, if you go to June 15th, that is smack dab in the middle of?
Forty-five days.
How about the end of June?
Or make it shorter.
By the end of June?
Make it shorter.
All right. So I'm thinking a motion along the lines of directing the staff to get the information necessary from the open record, or to make contact necessary, and also identify open dates on the calendar between May 15th and the end of June. That'd be my thought. And then next meeting, we can have dates and know what their, what the OORs availability is, so.
Is that a motion, or?
Well, I'm thinking out loud here, so.
Are you want to make a motion, or I?
I think, well, Luke said it's good. I'll move that we direct staff to contact the Office of Open Records regarding training, and that the staff provide available dates between May 15th and the end of June for that training.
And schedule training, right, so that's going to, that training would include right to know and Sunshine Act?
They don't do municipal.
Yeah, we're leaving the MPC out for now.
MPC out for now.
So, all right, that's my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? I think we're good. All right. Staff?
Yes.
Okay. Public?
Mr. Sherry might offer some training on Sunshine Act.
No, 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 no.
At a modest rate.
That's, tend to work on contingency fee. And I can tell you here, there is likely quite a lot of work. Dan Sherry, and Wayne, and Mr. Abel, Mr. Clark, and Mr. Booker, all of whom seem to be fairly energetic about this. I think it is long overdue, and wise to be doing this, especially with the Office of Open Records, especially if it's free. As soon as I started hearing again John Rice saying about what his firm could potentially propose, I was just reminded of John Rice's advice, or I think the only person up on this board, who was on the board at the time, was Nagel, when he thought that confidential, multimillion dollar settlement between the township and the vestiges of Lehman Brothers could be kept confidential. The Office of Open Records had a different opinion on the matter. Therefore, I dare say, especially in light of the report that just came out from Rice, about how he conducts an investigation, that John Rice's roles with this township should, whenever possible, be minimized. Something you said, Commissioner Borowski. Well, the Sunshine Act is just the Sunshine Act.
What does this have to do with the motion before us?
You're not the president.
Well, I'm asking the question.
To me, directly? Thank you. I'll field that question. Because Commissioner Borowski.
No, I didn't ask you.
Oh, well, you didn't, you didn't actually.
Point of order.
Make up your mind, John Nagel.
Gentlemen.
Point of order.
Gentlemen.
All we're doing is listen to this guy attack our solicitor.
That's Nagel. I'm Sherry.
Not addressing the motion in front of us.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Sherry, could you please limit your remarks to the motion, please?
I did. The only person who doesn't seem to think so is Nagel. Now, with respect to the.
Chair Nagel or Mr. Nagel to you, baby boy?
Somebody like to speak out to that?
Point of order. John, John, you cannot, you cannot do this.
Yep, right. The fact that John Nagel can't control himself is something for the chair to control.
Mr. Sherry, can you please continue?
Now, with, with respect, though, to your comment, Commissioner Borowski, that the Sunshine Act is the Sunshine Act. He said that. I brought up an example in my opening comments tonight about the Ethics Board, which is governed by the Sunshine Act, and how the chairman, Martin Heldring, had actually stated at a videotape meeting that we voted unanimously to move forward without an attorney. And I brought that up, and as an example, as to why you can't necessarily trust what people say, especially on the Ethics Board, why you have to verify. Now, when Martin Heldring said that, one of your fellow commissioners, Commissioner Booker, immediately told the press, how'd that happen? There's no public meeting where they made that determination? Hey, it's a Sunshine Act issue. And then what happened? Then you started to see the Ethics Board try to claw that back. Oh, well, maybe we misspoke, maybe we really didn't mean that. But it's quite true that the entirety of Radnor Township's governing bodies, including its advisory boards, should have this training, and it should be open for them. Because what you might think is obvious isn't necessarily followed by your boards. Again, I don't know how you can misspeak and say, voted unanimously. Okay, at least, that's tough for me to believe. But let's, let's give Mr. Heldring the benefit of the doubt and say that he truly did misspeak, and they didn't actually meet privately and vote unanimously. That, again, demonstrates that you need to know the law, and that way, when you speak at meetings, you don't say things that cause people to believe that the law has been violated. That training is important. Something else, Commissioner Abel, while I think it's nice that you are accommodating people's schedules, I dare say, if this is going to be open for the public, then political candidates can come and learn the training. That's the whole point of the Office of Open Records. Anybody in the township can show up and learn about it, and learn how to do a Sunshine, act in compliance with the Sunshine Act, and learn how a right to know request is processed and should be considered carefully by the township. So while scheduling is important, and it could be a graduation season for some people, if you make it publicly available, as it should be, it'd be kind of farcical to say, we're going to bring in the Office of Open Records and have a private meeting. If you're going to have a public meeting about this, people who think that it is worth their time will show up. And if John Nagel thinks that homework needs to be done, I would just say that, again, the training that he brought up.
You have one minute, Mr. Sherry.
Was about, thanks, I was interrupted by Nagel, but, okay. The, that that was eight years ago, and during the interim, during the interim is when that Lehman Brothers debacle took place. So if that training was provided, certainly at a minimum, that training was not, at least according to the Office of Open Records, sufficient. And that's not an attack on the solicitor, to say that his opinion was wrong. Not only wrong, relevantly wrong. Thanks.
Thank you. Any additional public comment?
Would there be interest in amending the motion to schedule it earlier than the 15th of May, and making it open to all candidates in the special election? And the public, I guess?
No, I'd prefer to hold it after the election. And then, I mean, Luke, when you read your motion, did we make this reoccurring every two years following an election?
No. No, I did not. So.
No, we could, but he didn't. He asked if he could.
I think the motion that he made was really more to direct staff, so that we could move forward.
Yeah, I think, I think we, this probably, it should probably, for next meeting, be a resolution. I think that'd be a good idea, and we can put it in there, you know?
Okay.
Okay.
All right. All right. So with regard to the motion, on the floor, we've had commissioner comment, staff comment, public comment. So with that being said, I guess we'll call the vote. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. All right. Passes seven to nothing.
Next, we have discussion about Townshipwide Cleanup Day. Commissioner Marshall?
Yeah, so this is continuing my theme of being a good store to the community, and also keeping the neighborhood clean. Now, I talked to Chief Colorolo and Manager Zakowski on Friday. We talked about the logistics of doing a pilot for a townshipwide cleanup, because I think in private discussions with other commissioners, it seems like it's, it may be too big of a, of an ask to do this townshipwide. So my, my proposal was to have the Police Department and Public Works work hand in hand with volunteers from the community to go out and clean what I'll call the Gateway, which is the corridor of Lancaster Avenue between Radnor Chester Road to the west, down to Route 320 to the east. King of Prussia Road would also be included in that, and everything in the right of way. My sense would be that we would have this Cleanup Day on Saturday, May the 12th, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. We would convene these volunteers at the Radnor Hotel, or somewhere proximate to the Gateway. We'd offer coffee and donuts for those who volunteered. The Police Department, Public Works, and potentially the school district could all work hand in hand in making sure that it was safe for anyone who wanted to come out and clean up for a few hours. And hopefully, this will be the start of what we see as more involvement, not only by the residents, but also by the stakeholders that surround that area, to take some pride and clean it up. Bob, did I miss anything?
No, I think we're good with that. Public Works will be assisting, so. Matt, you've got everything covered.
And again, this is a pilot, because if we tried to do it townshipwide, we'd have logistical problems in keeping everyone safe. I'm not expecting a huge turnout, but I would hope anybody who's in the studio, or, excuse me, in the, in the audience, I guess, would be.
The studio audience?
Studio audience. Would take a couple hours and, and help those of us who decide that that's a way to give back to the community.
All right. I don't think we need a motion or anything with regards to this. So, thank you, Commissioner Marshall, and thank you to staff, who will help coordinate.
Yes. Actually, I think the way that we, we decided that it didn't have to go to any kind of motion or resolution, but if we agree to that date, then I guess Tammy and Bob and Jennifer would have to announce it publicly on the website.
Which they can do. All right. Sounds good. All right, thank you.
Thank you. I just have a few questions on that. How many, how many staff are we talking about coming out on May 12th?
It'll be department heads, and you'll probably have on-duty officers that will help, as well as several Public Works guys.
Ballpark, number-wise?
Two.
Just?
But you'll have department heads that are on salary, so.
We're hoping to get also a bunch of volunteers from Valley Forge Military Academy. They tend to do those cleanup projects, so we're pretty confident we're going to get a lot of people from there.
So when, so when you're working on Lancaster Avenue, what do you need in terms of signage? Because once we take this on, you know, we have, we, township takes on certain responsibilities to ensure the volunteer's safety, which I would expect there'd be signage up, workers ahead.
We have two big message boards, one police, one in Public Works, that'll be signing that. We have traffic cones that we'll be using. We also have, we plan on using our Citizens Police Academy alumni with vehicles as well, that will be assisting in that area. But again, we, if we end up with an overabundance of volunteers, again, I think, which would be wonderful if we had that, but I'm not sure we're going to get that big a turnout on this first one, so I think we'll be able to control that. So if need be, we have vests for everyone, so if need be, I'll be willing to sacrifice myself out there in traffic, too.
And have we looked at alternative dates? You know, we talked about this before, May 12th is Mother's Day weekend. Do we, do we really want to be bringing people out on Mother's Day weekend?
The only problem with that, if I could jump in, Commissioner, the weekend after that is we start the graduations, the colleges, and then the high schools, and then the weekend after that is Memorial Day weekend.
And you lose me after May, so. Matt?
You can be a volunteer at that point.
I can. I'm still a volunteer. Do we have a rain date, or there is not going to be a rain date, in case?
We'll be out there in the rain, Sean, so I have a rain coat for you, so we'll be ready for you with an umbrella, so we'll be out there.
I need a yellow poncho, yeah.
Not a problem. We can make sure we have one for you, so.
Last, last question is, why can't we just make this part of the Public Works responsibilities to go through this area and, and clean it up to a better condition?
They do go on a regular basis to do this. It's just that we can't stop people from throwing things out the window, things bouncing off vehicles. But also, too, I think this shows a commitment from the township, that we're willing to commit to this, because at the end of the day, I think the intention is from Matt and myself, and I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, is that we want others to help adopt this and take this over, that this would be a gateway, that there would be an investment that people will make into this, being that we've actually cited the governor twice for the lack of maintenance from the state, and we can't count on the state, Penn Dot, from doing anything here. So that's why we're hoping that we will invest into this, in showing that we're willing to make a commitment to this by doing this, and showing that we're willing to put the hard work into this.
Yeah, and that's, that's exactly right, Bob. And I think we talked about, we wanted to get some of these land use applications finished, we wanted their process to finish, before we went to those stakeholders to ask them voluntarily to contribute. And I'm fine with that. I think that's the logical way to do it. And the other thing is, we're, what we're looking at right now, you know, some of those improvements were done, what, the Karen was done 15 years ago? Maybe the Griffin 20 years ago?
It was in the 90s.
Yeah, the 90s.
So, it was the early, 92, 93, so, 20, more than 20.
Right. So, so at this point, I mean, we have the opportunity to make that area look really good. And I, some of the things we talked about with, with Bob and others is, you know, installations for landscaping, but also some lighting. I mean, there's other things you can do to that area, and it candidly hasn't been touched in 20 or 25 years. So I think that would be one of.
Well, we, no, we spent a lot of time redoing the Karen last year.
Excuse me?
And, and cleaning up that hill right there.
That's true.
The Griffin hasn't gotten anything, though.
No, nor has the signage coming off of 476. And we're starting to get graffiti. Bob, we saw graffiti.
Right.
That Linda reported on. We, I mean, there's, this area needs attention. Is it?
And there's even people that have said, and we had talked about putting some type of message or signage, there are a lot of people that say, what is that rock pile that's up on top of the hill? That, for people driving by, actually some messaging of what that means, what it stands for. So there's a lot that can be done.
That's part of the intrigue, that's part of the intrigue of Radnor.
But that's part of it, too, that, you know, the, that history, and we know we talk about trails, and that's, it's, it's all part of that, because it has let go. We had John Hosbeck, our arborist, take a look at it. All those trees, there's not one tree of value that sits there. It's all scrub tree, that's, or weed trees that have grown up through there. The hope is to clear that area, so this, this is something that I think is a great start and a great initiative.
But you're not clearing trees and stuff on the 12th. I mean, you're just picking up trash.
No, no, we're picking up trash.
No, absolutely not.
We're picking up trash.
Startin' small.
And we do have protective vests and gloves, so we're not going to let people, you know, there's not going to be any heavy duty cleaning. It's going to be trash, you know, anything that we can pick up in terms of leaves, you know? And I don't see this being more than a two or two, two and a half hour exercise, and then we hopefully do it again next year.
All right.
Can I just ask one more, one more question, Matt? What's the official name of this called? The Gateway Enhancement?
Yeah, the Gateway is what we refer to. I think, Bob, you've done a map with Steve. We, there is a Gateway District that we talked about, yeah.
Is there any way to, I don't know, make it, because I think it would be good as a pilot if you could use this as a legacy for years to come? I know that I did kind of mention that to you. Maybe a name change, because although it is called the Gateway District, I don't know if a lot of the residents know that. So if we refer to it as Radnor Cleanup Day, or something that is a little bit more relatable, I'll say, to the residents, I think you may get more, more buy-in, and you may be apt to have more people show up. I mean, I, and, you know, like, so like, if we lose the word initiative, and, and I get it, but I think cleanup is more important. I know we've probably missed Earth Day, but something, if we could do it, you know, going forward in conjunction with that, I think there may be more buy-in, and then we would be able to have rain dates if, if we would need it.
I think we could talk about all of that. I think, as Chief said, we don't want to compete with the graduations for Villanova, Eastern, Cabrini, Valley Forge, and we certainly don't want to get into late May, early June, because we're going to start losing people. So that, that was the whole point of doing it that weekend.
All right. So, May 12th, townshipwide, or non-townshipwide, Gateway Cleanup? All right, great. Thanks, Commissioner Marshall, for spearheading this. Thank you, Bob. And staff. Okay. Did you have something? Okay. Okay, next. staff. Okay. Did you have something? Okay. Okay, next. Item D, Resolution 2018-37, Approving a License Agreement Between the Township of Radnor, the Skunk Hollow Community Garden Association, and Providing for a Community Garden in Skunk Hollow Park. Commissioner Rice?
All right, so to get a move, and I'll move for the passage of Resolution 2018-37, as just read by President Barowski. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. John?
Yeah. What's in front of the board is a update of a license agreement that was put in place when the garden first started. The Skunk Hollow Community Garden Association is a recently formed 501(c)(3) corporation. That group, and there may be some members here tonight, has continued the community garden, the 40 plots. This is similar to the license agreement that was originally approved by the board, I think, six or seven years ago? Sierra?
2012.
2012, okay. And it just carries through with a different entity now in charge, and a couple tweaks to it, but it's a license agreement, would renew annually unless either party, either the township or the association, would give notice to end it. My understanding, it's been very successful. There's more than 40 families that utilize the community garden out there, and hopefully the sun comes out soon and they can start again. So it's a license agreement. It's a year-to-year license agreement, and it's a continuation of what's been going on since 2012.
Okay. Any Commissioner comment? Okay. Any staff comment? Any public comment? Okay, then I'm going to go ahead and call the vote. All those in favor, excuse me, of Resolution 2018-37, the license agreement between the Township of Radnor and the Skunk Hollow Community Garden Association, providing for a community garden in Skunk Hollow Park, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven, nothing. Okay. Item E, a motion to post the addendum to accompany Grimm-- how do you even say that? Bean and Thatcher memo dated December 11, 2017, regarding the Ethics Board and disclosure of confidential information on township website prepared by Commissioner Booker. Commissioner Booker?
So that motion there basically outlines what the request is. As the board knows, in conjunction with others, I have-- there has been a response written to John Rice's investigation report regarding the leak of the confidential materials supplied by Superintendent Colarulo to the Ethics Board. As everyone is aware, a breach of confidential information occurred prior to last election, where confidential information supplied by the Superintendent of Police to the Ethics Board was given directly to the Radnor Democrat Committee. The use of that material was clearly intended to cause a different election result than what did occur. It was intended to affect an election. So my first question for John, would you please respond to--
Wait, Commissioner Booker, should we make a motion first?
Yeah. Well, you did--
Can I go ahead? I did not make a motion. Can I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to post the addendum to accompany the Grimm, Bean, and Thatcher memo dated December 11, 2017.
Do I have a second?
Second. So, John, my first question is, will you respond to Attorney Sherry's issue? Who was it that you spoke to? Was it Bojrae McCone, and they refused to come and speak with us, or did you speak with their counsel?
Commissioner Booker, I'm not going to answer Dan Sherry's question.
It's my question.
And this is a matter, in my opinion, that's a personnel matter. It's an investigation matter, and there's an ongoing Ethics Board investigation, as you know. I'm disturbed that the letter or some part of it was leaked, but I'm not going to discuss the investigation in a public meeting. Everything that you've raised in your report was never raised back in December, so let's have the discussion in executive session with the full board, and I'll answer the board's questions regarding this. I have a concern also regarding this, that there isn't existing Ethics Board investigation. The suggestion was made tonight by Mr. Sherry that that Ethics Board, I guess in the middle of their investigation, should be brought in under oath. I'm not-- I can't advise his board to interfere with what the Ethics Board is doing at this point. I mean, that's one of the charges that has been lodged against you already, that you tried to interfere with the Ethics Board.
There's been no charges lodged against--
So I think--
Well, it's part of the complaint, but--
There's an allegation which is baseless, of course. Yes.
And Rich, you may be right, but I'm not going to discuss the investigation except with the board in executive session.
But, John--
Commissioner Booker, just a second. The motion on the floor is whether or not we release the report. The report has been seen by the board, and the motion on the floor is whether or not we release the report onto the township website. So that is what the discussion should be about, not rehashing whether or not, you know, the report. We already discussed the report when we released the report by, from Solicitor Rice's office. So the motion on the floor is whether or not we're posting the addendum that you've provided to the board for us to review onto the township website.
This directly relates to that motion, and, John, you didn't raise any of these issues four weeks ago when we voted to release your investigation report. Now, in your investigation report, we voted to release. Your investigation report is online today. In it, it says you spoke with-- you spoke, you talked to these people, and the question, which I think is reasonable, is, was that directly or through counsel? It's already, we've already published it, and you raised none of these concerns at the time.
But that's not your question. I mean, we had an opportunity to discuss this twice in executive session.
It's part of the addendum as well.
In December, and I'm not going to answer Mr. Sherry's questions, Commissioner Booker. I'm not going to answer his questions. If the board wants to have a discussion regarding whatever communications my office had with--
All right, fine, John. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. You're not going to answer it. That's fine. Just say, I'm not going to answer it. All right. I fail to, I don't understand your logic on that, but I will accept you're not going to answer that. I think, though, that if you are not going to answer that question, and if you have these concerns about discussing the investigation, that you should have made that known as we were voting to release the investigation report. The investigation report, if had you said that, I'm sure that this board would have said, we're not going to release it. Now, also in connection with the investigation report, I had prepared an addendum that offers an alternative view of the data and materials presented in the investigation report, and Commissioner, Vice President Clark, wanted for the entire board to read that and have that opportunity. I didn't believe it was necessary. I think that we could have, as a matter of course, simply posted that, and it should not have come to play, but out of due regard and respect for Commissioner Clark's view, and in abundance of deference to the others on the Board of Commissioners, I made this available in a subsequent meeting. And we could have held up this vote on the, we could have held up publishing the entire investigation report, had you talked about those concerns, and we probably should have if you had those concerns, but nonetheless, what we could have done--
Let me clarify my concern. I don't have a concern about releasing the investigation report.
Then how can you, then why would you not want to talk about it?
It's, I will talk about it with the board in executive session.
I think we need to get back to the motion.
That's where it deserves to be, Rich.
Well, then the report should be in executive session.
Rich, your report is dated March 12. Today's April 9.
That's true.
Where's it been?
I just explained. I had brought it before the board, and Commissioner Clark insisted that the others have an opportunity to read it, which I provided.
I have a couple concerns. One is, it's not an addendum. It's a memo.
It's a memo.
Your opinion. It's not an addendum to what Grimm, Bean, and Thatcher did.
It's a memorandum that is to be appended to the--
But it's not an addendum.
All right.
Addendum usually gets written by the author of the original report. You can call it an alternate report, alternate facts, whatever you want to call it.
It's not an alternate report. It's an addendum to the report that you--
It's not an addendum to our report.
All right. John, John--
And I'm concerned about some of the content of it, because there is personnel issues there, and to suggest that the Ethics Board be subject to some investigation or hearing in the middle of two complaints in front of them, I think is problematic. And we can discuss that in executive session, too.
I think that what you're, what we have here is an intent to quash any alternative view of the facts that you presented, and I think that it is intended to squelch any critique of a report that failed to find out how this occurred. So here's my statement. We are facing a moral crisis in this township and as a constituency, and those who do nothing about it are inviting shame, as well its damage to our institution. We faced enough shame, based on the prior presidents of the board and other recently. This issue, the investigation of the leak of confidential information directly to the Radnor Democrat Party in an effort to affect an election, this issue concerns the Board of Commissioners, this township, and what it stands for. And in this meeting, I'm asking for this entire Board of Commissioners to support posting of this document and to continue to do the investigation. While this breach of confidentiality has affected me this time, this is not an individual issue. This is not about me or one person. This is an issue that transcends the individual. The issue we have at hand is, do we allow the voters to make the decision on who they elect, or do we allow others, either as part of administrative advisory boards or the administration, to decide who gets elected through disseminating illegally obtained materials? What happens if a couple of years from now, if someone is in an authoritative position, dislikes a candidate, and goes to lengths to hurt that person's campaign? And what happens when what we continue to see occur here is the weaponization of the Ethics Board and the weaponization of confidential materials, in this case, being disseminated outside to unauthorized people? I'm sure that the Chief of Police is as outraged as I am, that his confidential testimony, testimony which he gave under the premise would be confidential, was given to unauthorized people and published into public and used as a political cudgel to change an election. The actions taken by individuals to target a political campaign is a clear attack on our democracy and breaches the trust of the voters. We need to stand united on this issue to ensure that these acts are not repeated. What we have today is a report that says, somebody did something wrong illegally disseminating confidential materials. We don't know how it is. I have concerns. I don't want you to publish your, my report, which outlines in detail the concerns that I have with the report and the investigation that was done to date. You've just heard, John.
Yeah, I didn't say that. I did not say--
That's what I heard.
I did not say that it shouldn't be published. I said I have some concerns about what you're calling it and about some of the content. I fully expect the board to publish something. There's a couple versions. Which one that you've prepared? Which one? I'm not telling you not to do it, but if you want to discuss my report, then we should do that in executive session.
Well, as, again, John, it's just inconsistent. You did, we hired your firm. We said, do an investigation, John. Figure out how and who leaked this document. This is an affront. This was clearly a targeted political attack using unauthorized illegal information given to people who are not authorized in the, in a collusion with the Radnor Democrat Committee. Please find out how this occurred. You wrote a report, and as others have alluded to, it was 30 days, we extended it, and it was more than 120 days before we finally had a final version. At the time, we agreed to publish it. You expressed no concerns in publishing it. Now, when, on that same night, I had another document that discussed the findings of your report, you move now, it was tabled at that time, and had I known that, we would have perhaps tabled the publishing of the report in its entirety, but nonetheless, I brought it back as I was asked to do, and now it is again attempted to be squelched and not published on our township website in the, given the same light that your report was given, John. And I think you're being inconsistent to say that we can publish the John Rice report, but we can't publish anything that talks about the issues that are outlined in the John Rice report, which--
Commissioner Booker, no one is squelching your report. Your report is on the agenda. We can vote on it.
Pardon me. Pardon me. I think it's inconsistent to say that we must talk about this in executive session, or I have concerns, when you didn't say anything of the sort at the time. And it appears to me that you want to silence someone who has concerns that we do not, still do not know, after 150 days, how that process of our confidential preliminary inquiry was breached and used as a political attack to change an election.
Rich, nobody's trying to silence you, at least, especially not me, but if you ask me a question about the report, then my answer is, I'm not going to answer that question, and I have some concerns about what you're doing with your comments. And again, I'll reiterate, it's not an addendum to Grimm, Bean, and Thatcher. It's your opinion and your analysis of the facts. You're entitled to publish that. I expect the board to do that.
So do we, so I'm thinking out loud, do we want to table this, then? Because Rich has sent a couple versions in to us. One was today, which is way too short notice, in my opinion, for us to vote on that. You have concerns about it. Do we want to table this till the next meeting, so we have a chance to discuss it and then vote on it? I mean--
I mean, it's up to the board. It's the board's call.
I'd rather just get this done and be done with the person.
I think we move, let's move forward.
All right, then. And I guess we have to figure out which one we're voting on. In my opinion, in, you know, is it red line that was sent--
The red line I sent today was not substantive. It was linguistic changes, and they were as requested. The version that we have now is the exact--
Wait, as requested by who? And that was received today around 2:30, so that is definitely past the point of getting it out to the board so that anyone can--
It's not past the point. We change documents commonly before we go out. We changed the agenda today. We change things up to the last minute. It's not, there's no substantive change. The materials are the same as they were.
I'd like to make a comment here. There've been a bunch of different, Rich, there've been a bunch of different, you've issued a bunch of different reports. I guess my first question is--
I haven't issued a bunch of reports. There was one report, and then there was one set of changes that was issued today--
Okay.
--which Lisa just said you were not aware of, so there's only one.
So my question is, the report that you wanted to have released, and we voted on last, at the last meeting, is that the same report, or have there been any changes since then?
Have been changes.
There have been changes. So then there's two reports. So I guess my question, or my concern, is that you issued those reports to which commissioners? Because I was not privy to-- Because I was not privy to the report at the last meeting. But which Commissioners were issued those reports?
You have been privy to all of the reports that were issued.
No, no, I was not issued. We voted on a report last meeting that Lisa, myself, and John did not see.
Correct.
Okay. So who were the other Commissioners, if any, that got to see that report?
Various other Commissioners got to see it.
Well, which various, well, no, it's, it's important.
Why, why do you ask?
Because you're talking about credibility.
Why do you ask?
Why?
Why?
Well, there's something...
You've seen the report.
Well, well, no, no, I haven't, because there's been, again, multiple reports issued. That's what I'm trying to get to the bottom of. And it seems that you don't want to tell, I mean, if you're about transparency, which is what you're talking about, then why not say which of the Commissioners you initially showed that first report to? Why, why, why would you not want to, to let the public know?
I, I did want to let the public know, and I have let the public know.
No, you haven't, you haven't answered my question.
And I made the report available to you.
Rich, you have not answered my question. My question is very simple.
And the question, the answer is, all Commissioners have been given a copy of the report.
No, no, we haven't.
Yes, you have.
No, Rich, Rich, I was not, Rich, was I given, I was not given... I was not given a copy of the report.
You are free to comment on it, too. If you have any comments, I would, I would accept any comments you might have on it.
Rich, Rich, we, we both know where this is going. So I was not issued your report at the last meeting, nor was Lisa, nor was John. And you just told me, no, 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 you told me that I was, so now you're backtracking and saying that I was.
Since that meeting, all of you have been provided with that report.
Okay. Well, let's go back to that last meeting, when you issued a report to several Commissioners, but not all of them. Do you want to name which Commissioners you gave all those to?
I didn't issue any report to anybody. I worked collaboratively with a number of people on going through the investigation report and documenting a, a separate report, commenting on the various elements of the John Rice investigation report. It was a collaborative effort with people.
And which, and which Commissioners and who collaborated on it, for transparency's sake?
A variety of people collaborated on it and provided input.
And which people, for transparency's sake?
I do not believe that's relevant. You are free to collaborate on it right now.
It's, well, I'm talking about it back then, Rich. It seems that you're hiding something.
Not hiding anything. The report is available for you.
So then why not answer my question, then why not answer my question, Rich?
Because I collaborated with...
Because it was a Clear Sunshine Act violation.
It's, it's not a, it's not, it's a collaborative report. There was no Sunshine Act violation.
There's an accusation that there was a violation by Commissioners. So if Mr. Farhi wants to elaborate and, and make that accusation instead of beating around a bush, let's go at it.
So, did you see the report?
I've seen the report.
Okay. Matt, did you see the report?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Luke, did you see the report?
Yes.
Okay. So that's, and Rich, you wrote the report, so you saw it. So that's, okay, let me, let me go ahead.
Well, we've all seen it.
Okay, you all saw, so you all saw it before we voted on it. Is that correct?
Sean, hold on a second. I think you're mistaken. The last vote that was taken was as to whether or not we would release the report.
No, I'm talking Rich's addendum.
We never voted on that, Sean. So just to be clear.
No, we did, we, no, we didn't, because Luke was the one that didn't bring it to vote, but we were going to. So you were making, you were making policy by adding this to it, and we voted on it. In my opinion, without having me being able to see it, to make an informed decision. I was voting, I was voting on something I didn't get to see. Nor was Lisa, and nor was John.
And as a result, we...
So how could we vote for something that we didn't get to see? You, let me, let me, let me finish. You had the opportunity to collaborate, and you brought something to vote in which we didn't get to see. To me, that's upsetting. That shows a lack of transparency. And that sets an awful example for this Board.
Let me respond to that quickly. Because of the point that was raised, and again, in deference to Commissioner Farhi, Clark, Lisa, and Nagel, I, we withheld that and made the report available for all the Commissioners to read. And I had even asked that the public be available, have it, and have an opportunity to comment on it by having it published in the packet materials. And that, too, was also refused, again, in an attempt not to let others see it. But I would again offer Commissioner Farhi, and I'm asking Commissioner Nagel, and Barowski as well, please look at it and provide any comments that you might have on it. I am open to your comments. I want your support on it. It affects all of us as Commissioners. Not, while it was an issue for me this time, we do not want the weaponization of the Ethics Board and confidential materials to be used against any of us in subsequent elections. And I, I ask for your support and comments on the materials there. I think everything in there is accurate. I've given it to you, and you've had it for a period of time that you can comment on, and I hope you will comment on it. It is the opposite. I am asking for it to be made transparent and put out to the public so that everyone can see the concerns that we have with the report and where we are today.
You didn't put it out to the public. You only put it out to four of seven Commissioners.
No, I, I worked individually with various people and obtained their comments on the report in developing a document which is, it's not policy, it's an administrative issue of discussion.
They all got to see the finished product before it was, it came up to vote.
No, you're, you're all seeing the finished product now before coming up for a vote.
So then why, so then why did we take a vote to have that as an addendum at the last?
I think we've, you've asked and answered. It's all discussed. There's, if you have any comments, please make them. I'm happy to respect them.
I am.
Wait. Oh, is there any additional Commissioner comment?
Well, I, I do, I do want to address a couple of the issues. One is the accusation that there was a Sunshine violation. I, I expected that comment to come from the right side of the dais. And there was a phone call made to the Open Records Office to ask if collaboration on that document violated any rules. And I was given the opinion that it was administrative in function and that it was allowed. So Commissioner Farhi, nice try, but not a go this time. I, I will support this motion because I think it gets to the heart of the matter. This document isn't about the two violations that are before the Ethics Committee now. It is about an attempt to resolve the issue of a leaked document. And Commissioner Booker's right, it strikes at the integrity of our election, of our democracy and of the election process. So we spent $6,000 to this point, and we're no closer to identifying who leaked the document than we were before. And I think we owe it not only to this Board, but we have seven members named in the report who, I, I guess, had access to the document. Those seven members plus the Ethics Committee. So we also owe it to those members because they are being targeted, or not targeted, but they are being questioned by just having their name in this document. So I think we actually need to go a step further, and I would like to offer a motion to amend this document and ask that we send a letter to both Mr. McCone and Mr. Bowdre, asking them to appear before this Board by the meeting on April 23rd. And if they don't show, or we don't get to any, or we can't resolve the issue then, I think this Board needs to meet on the first meeting in May and decide whether we want to take it to the next step and do a further investigation because we, we, we just can't let this continue to go on. Something happened. It was, and it's the one thing that is spelled out in, in, in the report, in the Rice document, is that it is clear that McCone had access to the entire three pages, the three-page Calorula letter because of what was typed at the top of the de-mail memo. We need to resolve it. I personally don't want to spend any more money on it. So I think bringing Mr. Bowdre and Mr. McCone in here is the right way to go about it. If they don't feel comfortable coming in here, then I, I think we need to have a, a discussion amongst the Commissioners on how best to proceed. But I don't think we let it just hang out there and not be resolved.
Jake, I have a question. I'd love to know who you spoke to at the Open Records Government Office, because according to the website, it says the vote taken by any agency on any motion, proposal, resolution, rule, regulation, ordinance, report, or order, is considered an official action. And we did actually take a vote, although it was...
We didn't take, we took a vote in public in accordance with the Sunshine Act. This is not a violation.
But I didn't, but we didn't get to see what we were voting on to add to it. So that's a problem.
Well, I can't support this because, first of all, it is not an addendum to Grim Bean and...
Well, I offered a motion.
So are you, you're offering an official motion to the, to this addendum?
Correct.
Well, that's an additional motion, because it has nothing, we're not voting on the report. We're voting on whether the report is made public through the website. So that's what you need to amend.
Sean's correct. So we'll have to take that up as a separate motion, because the...
Wait, no, he...
The current motion on the floor, Commissioner Nagel's right, is to whether or not we release this report onto the township website. It is not the report itself. It is whether or not we are releasing the report. So if Commissioner Abel would like to make...
He can amend that. He can amend that.
Why can't I make a motion to amend and add the two-step process to that motion?
You said you wanted to add a letter requesting people to come.
No, the two-step process is one that we direct Solicitor Rice to write a letter to Mr. Bowdre and Mr. McCone.
How does that, how does that change the report?
Nothing to do with the motion in front of us.
How does that change the motion in front of us? Why is that amended?
It can be done separately. I mean, it...
It could be, it could be amended. It could, he could amend, he could amend it.
Well, the, the motion is to post the report on the website. And, and just to be clear, we're talking about the version that was circulated this afternoon at 2:30, correct, Rich?
No, we are not talking about, no, we are not talking about that version because this Board has not seen it. The only people who've seen that at this point are myself, Commissioner Clark, and Commissioner Booker. No one else has seen that. That report came this afternoon to me, to my personal email. I did not see it until about quarter to 3:00. And I wrote you back at about 4:00, Commissioner Booker, saying that that would not be considered this evening because the rest of the Board has not seen it. The Board is seeing, I believe, what is version number...
Two.
Two, thank you. That they were, that was posted and, or was amended, the amended version, which we received, I believe, last Friday. So that is what we're talking about this evening.
No, that, you received it last Wednesday.
No, the second, so would you like me to describe the version that I saw, that I now have? The version that's here now as opposed to the version I received on Wednesday?
Yeah, Lisa, all right, so...
I'd like to, I'd like to adjourn into executive session.
I second.
There's a motion on the floor to adjourn into executive session.
I second.
It's been seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those in favor...
Based on what rationale?
My rationale is that what is happening right now is executive session. I would like to adjourn into executive session. There is a motion on the floor. It has been seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Under what exception from Sunshine? Why is it, why would, what is the exception?
Because I believe that this involves, this involves Commissioners on this Board.
Discuss with counsel and discuss the investigation.
I would like to discuss this with counsel. There is a motion on the floor. It has been seconded. All those in favor to adjourn to executive session so that we can discuss with counsel what exactly is transpiring, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed?
I, I just...
It's not, it's not executive session.
Okay, so the version I had last Wednesday, gentlemen, included Commissioner Marshall's name, Commissioner Abel's name, and Commissioner Booker's name. I raised the concern to my fellow Commissioners that this report that came out as a memorandum also on township letterhead had their names on it as if they were authors. Gentlemen, that is the version that I had in my hands last Wednesday. And I asked if this was the version that you wanted submitted and for the rest of the Board to see. So that version was changed. The version that I then received, I believe, last Friday from Commissioner Booker, is the version that was shared with the full Board. So that is the version that...
There was no changes to, there was no changes to language. The only change, so...
As you will also note, on the agenda, Commissioner Abel and Commissioner Marshall's names have been removed from the, the, the agenda because I also believe that Commissioner Abel and Commissioner Marshall did not have the opportunity to review what was submitted. And they also did not approve what was submitted with their names on it.
Well, I mean, I'll, I'll speak for myself. It wasn't about approval of the, the memo. It was that I did not have an opportunity to, to do one final review before it went in. So I talked to Rich. I still agree with the content. And then when you had called me and talked about being on letterhead, I, I really didn't know what that meant. So I wanted to take a look for myself before I made any decision. I don't see the problem with the letterhead. It was, you know, he's, he's an elected official. He can put the Radnor seal on there if he, if he wants to. And after reviewing, I didn't have, I didn't have issues with, with the content.
Yeah, and I would say my decision to ask you to retract was purely due to the fact that I wanted the vote taken tonight so we all had the ability to review the same document. Now, it sounds like it was revised again. So I certainly don't want to vote on it tonight unless I have a chance to read it, and I haven't had a chance to read what, what was submitted this afternoon.
There's been no substantive change. The changes that were made were at the request of various Commissioners that I remove the township seal and the address of the township, which I did, and that I submit it as the persons who drafted the document for a vote and upon which others could join in approving the document as well, which was done. The document is the same document that was prepared and seen. It was prepared September 12th, it was March 12th it was prepared. There were revisions that were non-substantive, linguistic, and some various clarifications, non-substantive changes, and those were submitted, and the entire Board saw that document. So this is going back to the original March 12th document, and I, I did make that available for everyone to look at. I expected Lisa to send out a red line and asked her to do that, to send that out so that everybody would have it this afternoon to be able to vote on it today.
Well, unfortunately, Commissioner Booker, you sent that to my personal email, and I have a job, and I did not see it, and I did not think it was enough.
And so you decided, again, that you were going to quash my ability to get this out.
No one is quashing your ability to put it out. It is on the agenda.
Lisa, it sounds like you and John are emphatic, that you do not want the public, and you do not want to vote on this document, and you do not want this to be seen by the public.
That's ridiculous. It is on the agenda. We are voting on it. There's a motion on the floor. I did not say that.
Rich, there's nothing stopping you from letting the public see it. I mean, print up copies, put them on the table, put them on a website. There's nothing stopping you. I don't, I mean, I don't think that, that statement makes, holds much water.
So Commissioner Nagel, I believe you had a comment with regards to this before the whole, whatever happened here.
I was just saying that this is cast, the motion is incorrect. This is not an addendum. This is Commissioner Booker's rebuttal to that report. It does not represent anything more than an attempt to distract people from the underlying ethics charges that have been filed against him.
That's absolutely not the case. It does not in any way refer to the ethics charges. The, the ethics complaint, there's no charges. There was an ethics complaint. The allegations are false and baseless, but that has nothing to do with this report. This report simply... This report simply is an addendum to the report that John Rice and his firm wrote detailing their investigation as to the illegally obtained or leaked Colorolo letter, which ended up as part of the, the complaint in, in the hands of people not authorized. That's all it does. And I, I, I will table, I will table this motion if that's the desire. I, I do not think that that's appropriate. We've already had four weeks of the John Rice report being out with no rebuttal, with no addendum, with no discussion of the areas that were left uncovered, unchecked.
You could have issued your memo, Rich, a month ago, but just, let's, because you.
You just said you had concerns. I mean, John, you have concerns?
But I can't, I can't stop you.
Executive, what is it?
I can't stop you from doing that. You can release that. That's up to you.
You just don't, John, you just don't want.
You brought it.
You just don't want a, a, a report that, that points out there was deficiencies in the investigation. I think that's what you're saying.
Rich, I'm, I'm fine. I got broad shoulders. I have some concerns about some of the content that you have in there, but just to get back to where we are, because I think Lisa had the original, your rebuttal last Wednesday, that was revised on Friday, and names were removed. There were some other things modified.
No language changed. No language changed.
But that, that's the motion that's now in front of the board, okay? To release that. You then, I have the one you circulated this afternoon. It's substantially marked up. Whole paragraphs are crossed off. If you want this to be put out, decide that because it's your call. This is, this is what you circulated this afternoon.
Well, the, the problem is, is that Commissioner.
And it should be, and it should be released.
I, I, I agree with you. I think we agree on that.
I have some concerns, but it's up to you.
I'm surprised that Commissioner Borowski was trying to again delay its release for another two weeks.
I don't, I don't think she's trying to delay.
There's no substantive changes that are there. The changes that are there were the changes to change it back because the people who saw the changes on Wednesday said, well, let's not change it. Let's go back to what we had. That's all there is.
All right, we, we've spent 45 minutes on this. No, no one's getting back.
I think it warrants, all right. So, so here's.
Let's call the vote. It's the one on Friday, or let's do, let's get the comment. I know, we'll get the comment.
Let me offer an amendment to the, to the motion and say, I think John's right. I need to amend this motion to utilize the latest version of the document.
But no one's seen it.
No one saw it because Lisa purposely failed to do that. But that's true. But nobody's seen it. But everybody.
Commissioner Booker, technically, anything that goes on this agenda needs to be in our hands by Wednes.
It was.
No, not.
It was by Wednesday. And, and you offered changes, which I made.
Rich, let's be, let's be fair.
I didn't offer you any changes on this.
If this, let's be fair. Nobody's purposely doing anything. If this is what you want posted.
That's what I want posted.
Then bring it back.
Yeah, I, I can't, I, I can't vote for that one. I can't vote for it.
Don't change it and bring it back.
People haven't seen it. I can't vote for that one.
People, people did.
So table it, or I can't vote for it.
Rich, wait a second. Hold, you just said that you'd be agreeable for this to be tabled, correct? You just said that. Did I hear that correctly? Until people have a chance to review it on the board?
I, I said that I would table it based on Lisa Borowski's failure to, to distribute it because she was trying to quash the ability. But for whatever reason, if people, Matt, I would say there's, there's no substantive changes. There's no, there's, that, that you and I have discussed the exact materials here that are under review, but again, out of abundance of deference to this board, if you want to take another, more time to look at it, I will allow that because I, I think that that is the will of the board. I have, I, not that I will allow it, I will acquiesce because it's only right.
Well, I have two issues. One is I think it's only fair that everyone has a chance to finally review it, and then it gets voted on next, next meeting. And secondly, I, I don't understand in terms of where we are with Commissioner Abel's motion because he changed the motion from what it originally was. So did, did you want to?
No, no.
You didn't get a second on that.
It's, it's not.
Okay.
So, all right, so what I would propose is this. I was going to make a motion, which I thought would fail, which would amending Commissioner Abel's motion to use the revised version, which I sent this morning to Luke and to Lisa.
You did not send it this morning, Rich.
I did send it this morning.
That is untrue. Would you like me to call up the email on my phone?
No. You got it, you got it this afternoon. That's true.
Commissioner Clark has it as well. Yeah, I did. We got it this afternoon.
I sent it, I sent it twice.
Thank you for being.
All right, I sent it, I sent it twice this morning and this afternoon.
Did not send it to me this morning, Rich.
I sent it to you this afternoon, which I said. You should have distributed it, but you didn't. So I was going to make a motion that we use the latest version. I don't know that we should do that because I think it's clear that Commissioners Clark and Marshall have made it clear that they, they do not want to vote on that one. So I think that I have to pull, I think I have to pull it and table it. Well, I mean, Jacob, would you, would you, unless you have an objection to that?
I really don't want to do this in two weeks. Why can't we just vote on the memo that was released last Friday?
We could, we could, we could do that.
Let's do that, please. That's the motion on the floor, all right? The one from Friday. Let's move on. Staff comment, please. Is there any staff comment on this?
Well, before we go any further, so my memo, or my, my motion to amend, can we do that after this vote?
Sure.
Okay.
And Jake, I think that I have reticence to vote on the one from Friday because of your specific comments that you, that you wanted, that that's reflected in the most recent version right here.
I, I can tolerate it. Let's just go forward with it.
Well, I haven't seen it, and my name was mentioned earlier, so I would like to read it before it goes to, to vote. And I think that's only fair.
This is the one.
Correct. It's the same memo from Wednesday. He just struck your name from it.
And it has been struck.
So the version that we have all seen does not have the names on it. The version that Commissioner Booker sent this afternoon does not have names on it. It is, I don't know. Is it? I haven't even had a chance to read it. He says it's not substantially changed. I don't know.
So we're moving past that. We're just going to go back to the.
I don't think, I don't think we should move past, I don't think we should move past it.
The motion's on the Friday version. That's the motion.
The motion is on the Friday.
All right. No staff comment? Any public comment?
Yes, Dan Sherry-Wing. By the way, just procedurally, I don't think Commissioner Abel really got an answer in terms of the motion to amend, which was to add Doug McCon and Jim Bowdre to a letter to say, hey, guys, you want to come in here and explain yourselves, if not, at the following meeting. There really wasn't any response other than, oh, you can just do it separately. That's a direct question to the solicitor, or the solicitor should pipe up and say, that is either impermissible or it is permissible. No direct answer from the solicitor, and I don't think that was appropriate.
Not permissible.
Not permissible.
How about that?
Finally, for, for whatever reason, whatever. Same thing, okay? Commissioner Booker, well, John, would you mind answering? Who's the attorney? I can't. Personnel. Is Doug McCon personnel? Doug McCon an employee of Radnor Township? No. How about Jim Bowdre? Is he personnel? No. How could the identity of their attorney be possibly considered confidential and a matter for an executive session? As Commissioner Booker points out, we have the report. We know that McCon and Bowdre, either directly or through an intermediary, it's not terribly clear, were contacted, and they declined, under the advice of counsel, to talk. So how is it appropriate for the solicitor to refuse to answer a question posed by Commissioner Booker? What's the name of the attorney? Personnel. How? Why? How about this? Oh, well, you know, I have some concerns about Mr. Sherry, this is John Rice speaking. Oh, that interference in terms of, what? Interference? The Ethics Board was engaged. They were queried. They were the subject of the investigation in part. Did you guys leak it? All I'm talking about is that John Rice apparently just went with what their attorney said as opposed to querying them directly or getting them to swear on affidavits. What's the concern with that? I guess another factor for executive session. Okay? By the way, did anybody pick up what John Rice said to Rich Booker? Because the videotape will reveal it, okay? About, about, about this memo? Did you hear John Rice say alternative facts? I heard John Rice said alternative facts. Anybody think that's appropriate for a solicitor to say that? Everybody in this room knows what alternative facts means. That's not appropriate. If the solicitor is defensive about his work product, there might be a pretty good reason. Because I read it. I think it's a disgrace. But it's not the solicitor's job to start critiquing, especially in a way using a phrase like alternative facts, something that he doesn't like. And I dare say it's not appropriate for the solicitor to refuse a reasonable question by saying, I'm not answering Dan Sherry's question if it's coming from Commissioner Booker. If it comes from this dais, it's from a commissioner. The identity of who represents McCon and Bowdre, assuming the solicitor has that information, that can be revealed publicly. And the fact that he won't do that, again, doesn't speak for the strength of his report. I do hope that this is unanimous, that there is some type of explanation, because as Commissioner Abel points out, six grand and passing of a significant amount of time. And it is Exhibit Six, and that's part of the Elaine Paul Schaefer investigation. It's not part of any ethics complaint against Richard Booker in terms of how that document was developed. It then became the groundament of the complaint against Commissioner Booker, but only because it was impermissibly leaked to Radnor Democratic Committee men. And the public deserves answers for that. What if something in the investigation of Commissioner Booker gets out, and then it's weaponized against Commissioner Abel or Commissioner Borowski? That's why you have to put a stop to it. That's why this is important in terms of the investigation. You do not have confidentiality right now with your Ethics Board. You don't. Exhibit Six demonstrates that you don't. And how can you know? By the way, if Exhibit Six was the only document that impermissibly got out, you haven't identified the leaker. Please publish something that demonstrates at least to this township that what was actually released by John Rice is not the end of the story, that there are people up here who are taking this seriously, that recognize quality work product when they see it, and work product that falls substantially beneath reasonable, in my opinion. But there is a difference between that. So with that, Daniel, Danny Boy Sherry signing off for now. See you all in a bit.
Oh, Danny Boy. What I will say is, if we vote to publish the Friday version, I will withhold putting it on the website until we get all comments from anybody, including John Rice, get comfortable with, and then we can post it.
So when you get comments, you're going to change it?
Yeah.
The, the version from Friday?
If, if people want comments, we'll all agree on it.
Well.
What if the comments get rid of this report?
The version you circulated this afternoon, who gave you those comments? Because it was redlined fairly extensively.
It was, it's minor redlines. It's linguistic and stylistic things. It's, it's very minor if you read, if you read them.
I would not call that minor.
I, I do. I call it minor. It's a six-page document.
Can I just say, we interrupted public comment. Was there any additional public comment? Okay.
Well, the, the concern was the version. So I'm, I'm, all I'm trying to do is assuage any concerns with the version, that's all.
I'm going to go ahead and call the vote. So all those in favor of posting the addendum to accompany the Grimbeard and Thatcher memo dated December 11th, 2017 regarding the Ethics Board and disclosure of confidential information on the township website, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. Motion passes, four to three.
And there was a second motion by Commissioner Abel?
I will certainly allow Commissioner Abel. Commissioner Abel, do you have another motion you'd like to make?
Thank you, President Borowski. I would like to put a motion on the floor that we do our best as the Board of Commissioners to resolve what the Rice report identified as a clear leak of Exhibit Six to Mr. McCon and Mr. Bowdre. And I propose doing this in two steps. The first step would be having our solicitor write a letter asking Mr. McCon and Mr. Bowdre to appear before the board no later than April 23rd, Board of Commissioners meeting to respond to the question. If that gets us no closer to identifying who leaked the document, then at the first meeting in April, this board should have a discussion on whether we pursue a further investigation.
Nay.
Second. Sorry, first meeting in May, that we discuss.
Further investigation.
Further investigation of the leaked document.
Including a special counsel and bringing, requiring people to testify under oath or provide affidavits under penalties of perjury?
That's part of the discussion that we'd have to have at the first meeting in May.
Okay.
But, yeah.
I'll second that.
Well, and I just want to, if there's one, I mean, we hear a lot of, the word bipartisan thrown up on this dais a lot. If there's one issue that we should be bipartisan on is that we restore the integrity to the election process, and that nobody should be happy that there's a leaked document that went to influence a campaign. It could be any one of us next, and we need to do our best to resolve this issue.
So again, the, the motion is to have John Rice write a letter requesting that Bowdre and McCon appear before this board to provide an explanation, and then if they refuse or if they, we get nothing from them, then we will evaluate additional investigatory methodologies and techniques. I seconded that. Is that, do you agree that? I think that's.
That, that sums it up. I mean, we should do it, you know, the letter, hopefully we'll get to the solution at no cost to the taxpayer. Well, we've already spent $6,000. Yeah, I, I don't want to take it to the second step, but, you know, there has to be consequences for.
But, but, and we haven't asked, we have not asked McCon and Bowdre to actually provide an explanation, so I think that makes sense.
So we have a motion on the floor that has been seconded.
What? John Rice is saying he wrote the letter already.
Is there any Commissioner comment to the motion currently?
Yeah, so if they don't show up, what's, what's the next, what's, what's the next step?
The board would meet the first meeting in May and discuss other alternatives.
Which is what? To get them here under oath? Do we have the right as a, as a Board of Commissioners? Do we have that power and right?
Let's discuss that in May.
Well, I think that it would be important to know upon this vote what the next steps are, so we're not spinning our wheels or wasting our time.
I think the next step is to have the discussion in the first meeting in May. No decision tonight on what that discussion would result in or what measures would be taken. There's all, there's different options that have been thrown out of there, some good options, some bad options.
And I, correct me if I'm wrong, but the previous board, which Commissioner Booker, Commissioner Clark, Commissioner Nagel all served on, the discussion was Solicitor Rice would do his investigation. If he wasn't able to come to a conclusion that resolved the issue, then there would, that I think the previous board supported the idea of doing a further investigation.
That was the discussion with Commissioner Curley at the time, and, and when this was initiated.
Okay.
I think it was the board, that was the board.
Was there disagreement?
I think what Jake says is accurate.
Okay, I don't think we can go back and say what the prior board did or didn't do. I mean, I, unless we want to call up the meeting and see when they discuss that.
I think what you said is accurate.
Three commissioners are here, so I was asking, is that not the case?
Well, we've got one commissioner saying that that's not accurate. We've got our solicitor saying that's not accurate. We have one Commissioner saying it is accurate. And Luke, I don't know.
Did any Commissioner reject the idea?
So I guess we can, what we can only do is deal with is the current motion on the floor. Is there any additional Commissioner comment with regards to Commissioner Abel's motion?
Yeah, I think this has been the most, I don't know, as long as I've been appointed, this has been the most troubling issue for me as it relates to the Ethics Board and the process of how these complaints are filed. I think that's for another day. You know, I would take the approach, and I haven't talked specifically to Commissioner Booker about this, but this is really not the township's business, per se. It is, we're trying to provide transparency, good governance, obviously do away with whatever Commissioner Booker feels as though that he were somehow targeted for, you know, a pre-election ethics complaint. I would just ask him, would you consider, if these two gentlemen were to appear, you know, would you give them any type of immunity? I mean, what, what's your goal?
Certainly, we could discuss that. I think that it's obvious that Doug Mccone and Jim Bowdre were provided this materials and told to do a job as a political operative and to attempt to affect an election. But I don't think that they were the ones that were the, that had illegally come, I don't believe that they stole the materials. But nonetheless, we don't know. They might have stolen them. We need to find that out. But if they would be willing to tell us how they got it, certainly that's what the key issue is. And that that would be the important element, and that certainly I, in my capacity, would not be looking to prosecute anyone. We're trying to find out how this happened and to stop it from happening again. And that's what we should all be about.
Well, there's a third component to that, too. It's to restore the integrity of the other individuals named in this report who had nothing to do with the leak.
Right. And so we need to clear those people. You know, it's exactly right. If there was a theft by these individuals, then the people who were named in the Rice report as being possible suspects, they should have their name cleared. So it is, again, Commissioner Abel is exactly right. It's restorative of the process. It is, brings back the credibility of the process, and it also will exonerate those who are not responsible for this. The answer to your question is yes.
Well, we're going on over an hour of this discussion, and I think, you know, my sense is this Board has many more pressing issues to address. I chalk this up to the failings of the prior Board. And I'm at liberty to say that because I'm not running. This is an unfortunate outcome, and it tainted both parties in the township, and this is where we've gotten. So the only way I would support this, and I'm not sure that I would, is if you would agree that if these two individuals were voluntarily asked, there would be no repercussions for them to come in and talk to us. That's the only way I would support this.
So.
They will be voluntarily asked. They will be, that was the motion, that they be asked to come in. And that if they won't, then we will.
Rich, on camera, with no repercussions. There's not going to be any further issues in terms of what their liabilities to you are personally or to others. I don't think bringing two individuals in is a good idea. I don't. But if you were to agree to that, that there would be no further repercussions, they have essentially impunity to come in and talk.
Rich, the goal is to get to the bottom of this. I agree with Matt.
But if they come in and they say, "I'm not going to tell you," then that would be, then we would be giving them immunity, and they could have actually still done something wrong, right? So I think that if they are able to come in and provide information as to the true nature of how they obtained this and the true culprits, then certainly I would be very pleased to leave it at that and to have no further pursuit of them criminally.
So you want them to come in and provide you the information you want to hear?
Oh, I want them to come in and provide the truth.
I feel like that's what you just said.
The truth of where they got it, that's all.
So both these gentlemen have already, both these gentlemen were already interviewed, declined to be interviewed by Solicitor Rice for fear of being sued by you. And now you're going to ask them to come here and speak on camera to the Board of Commissioners, who, quite frankly, I'm not even convinced that we have any jurisdiction over this. This is currently an active ethics investigation. Both Mr. Mccone and Mr. Bowdre have already spoken, I believe, to the Ethics Board. So I don't know why we would insert ourselves.
Well, Lisa, you're on the Ethics Board. Did they come and speak to you or not?
I don't know why they wouldn't, we would be inserting ourselves into this process. So I will not be supporting this motion. I don't support bringing in our residents who've decided to file something for whatever reason in order to, Mr. Sherry.
I'm sitting down.
Okay. To bring, because then to me, this sets a dangerous precedent for any resident that wants to file something.
The dangerous precedent was set when the leak occurred, and it was used in a campaign. That's the dangerous precedent.
It wasn't used in a campaign, Mr. Commissioner Abel. It was used.
Two weeks before an election. It was used, I mean, let's, I don't know how we're going to argue about that.
Well, we're not.
It was used to target.
It was an ethics complaint that was filed. It is currently an active ethics complaint in front of the Ethics Board. I am opposed.
That was posted on a website.
Okay.
And used in a paper. It was to target an election.
And let's, to be fair, and to be fair, I mean, that's kind of been the MO for ethics complaints in this township.
So when I preface my comments, this is not about the complaints. This is about resolving the leak, because that's the dangerous event that occurred in this, in this instance. It was that somebody named, one of these seven individuals named in this report, according to the Rice report, is likely the person who leaked the document. That's what we have to get to the bottom of to prevent this from happening again. This shouldn't be a partisan issue. This should be a bipartisan issue to identify who leaked, to prevent it from happening again, and to restore the integrity to our election process.
And I agree with, I agree with that 100%. Lisa, this is not about anybody personally affronting Rich Booker. I get affronted all the time. I am used to it. I deal with that. In politics, we all are dealing with that. That's not the issue. This transcends the individual. This is not politics, as usual. This was a breach of our township rules and laws, and it was used, the materials were used as a weapon to politically control the, an election, or to control the Board and who sits on it. And we all must stand up. All of us are subject to this. All of us should be concerned about it. This is not a bipartisan, this is not a partisan issue, and I don't want it to be. And I am sincere in my message to Commissioners Farre, Nagel, and Borowski. I want you to go through that document, and I'm happy to take your comments on it. The issue is, we need to get to the bottom of it for the integrity of the township and our institutions. And Lisa, as you, as the person serving as our representative on the Ethics Board, I would think that you would want to also do that for purposes of the Ethics Board. The Ethics Board is amongst those who should be exonerated if they were not the source of this, but we don't know right now. That's what we need to get to.
Rich, if the Ethics Board can't bring them to speak, what makes you think the Board of Commissioners will?
Well, Lisa said that she thought that they did. I don't know. I guess she's, she does know one way or the other. I guess she doesn't want to say. But we, you know, we don't know. We may never know, and we need to know. The Ethics Board is not the Board of Commissioners. That's the rationale.
No, no, I think the answer to Commissioner Farre's question is, we want to do this at the least cost to the taxpayer. So if we don't send that letter to Mr. Mccone and Mr. Bowdre, I don't think we're doing our due diligence. I hope they would come in and just provide the answer. I don't know that it'll occur. So that's why we take the second step, which is to meet the first meeting in May and decide what we want to do going forward.
And the issue at hand, the question by Commissioner Marshall was, would you offer immunity? From my perspective, if Mr. Mccone and Bowdre would come in and give us the true information, how they got the document, how the leak occurred, if we could find that out, I certainly would not move to further prosecute either of those two.
What if they come in and they say they just got it in an envelope in the mail? I mean, is that, then you still have no answer, and I don't understand exactly what purpose that serves.
Well, I direct that to Commissioner Abel, who's the one that made the motion.
I have a question. I mean, you can't have contingent immunity, can you? I mean, it's just, you know, if you get the answer that you want to hear, then, okay, we're good. But if we don't, then we're going, then the immunity's off the table. Can you speak to that?
Can we? We're talking about, can we? Do we have the power to do that? I think we're spinning wheels here on something we need to do.
That was my whole point, that we don't have the teeth to do this.
If Doug Mccone shows up and says, "I stole it from the township building," it is up to Radnor PD or CID to decide what to do with that, not us. So let's stop wasting time, please. Can we have a public comment and call the vote, please?
All right. Mr. Sherry, you've been waiting so patiently.
Say staff first. Say staff comment. Good. Figure it out. No comment. Very good. Very good. Now, in terms of, in terms of how this sort of works, in terms of immunity, let's just be clear about one thing. Exhibit 6 is whose property?
Township's.
Township's property. So it would be up to the township whether they decided whether or not to go after Mr. Mccone and Mr. Bowdre for any type of tort, okay? Not Rich Booker. Rich Booker's decisions as to what he wants to do, whether there's a cognizable claim under tort law, that's up for him to waive. But Exhibit 6 is township property. It's township employee. It's the superintendent who provided it in a confidential setting. Now with Mr. Farre's comments about, oh, well, can you force them? Commissioner Abel was very clear. He said, "It's writing a letter requesting that they can come in," right? Did I hear that properly? Just requesting them to come in, not to subpoena them, right?
Right. It would be a letter asking them to appear before the, or anytime prior to the April 23rd meeting.
That they show up. And hopefully, the solicitor will know who to address that letter to, because he won't answer whether or not they have counsel or not. Regardless, if it gets to them, they can come in and disclose how they got it. Now, again, I thought it was rather interesting what Lisa Borowski said, who, as Commissioner Booker points out, is on the Ethics Board. What are you going to do if they come in and say it just showed up in an envelope? Well, guess what? That's not going to fly with Mccone. You know why? Because Mccone, four days prior to him filing that ethics complaint, was at the Ethics Board meeting, when Elaine Paul Schaefer's complaint was being heard. And you know what the chairman said? And it's on videotape, Commissioner Borowski? And everything having to do with the preliminary inquiry is what? Confidential. So what? Shows up in the envelope if they want to go that route? And in the mailbox? Too bad, won't fly with Mccone, because he was there. So even if he never saw it prior to that meeting, prior to filing the complaint, he had been expressly told, as had everyone else at that Ethics Board meeting, where Mccone is present and speaks, that anything having to do with confidential preliminary inquiry is just that, confidential. But you seem to, again, be speaking like you know something. Did you just perhaps inadvertently reveal what Mccone and Bowdre might have told the Ethics Board in a confidential preliminary inquiry? Blink, blink. Confidential preliminary inquiry means exactly that. It's confidential. So if they are going to come in and say it just showed up in an envelope, be advised, Commissioner Borowski, if you're revealing something that maybe you shouldn't, that won't work for Mccone. Might work for Bowdre. He might be able to claim ignorance. Won't work for Mccone, sign the complaint. And it is important as to how this document actually got out, and who this document belongs to, okay? And it's not a jurisdictional issue. Writing a letter to two guys who ended up with a confidential piece of information, and then four days after, the chairman of the Ethics Board says this is all confidential, use it in an ethics complaint against somebody who's about two weeks away from an election? That's a major issue. It transcends politics, as Commissioner Abel points out. Why you're so guarded and concerned about it is really disturbing. There's no good faith excuse for Mccone or Bowdre to end up with that document. If you'd like, re-watch the October 12th, 2017 Ethics Board meeting involving Elaine Paul Schaefer. You will see how unambiguous Martin Heldring is about the confidentiality of a preliminary inquiry, okay? Doug Mccone strikes me as many things. Extremely forgetful is not one of them. He's told that, and then four days later, poof, it just goes out of his brain, and he still not only references it, but actually attaches it to a complaint?
You have one minute, Mr. Sherry.
The fact that Doug Mccone was identified on a website as a Democratic committee man, as is Jim Bowdre, and the fact that you're a Democrat, Ms. Borowski, should not enable you to give these guys any excuse in the book. And again, I find it fascinating that you would just put out there that, what are you going to do if they say they just got an envelope in their mailbox? Don't know who you're talking to, but remind the person, if you are talking to somebody, of that timeline. It's inescapable. That's why there are no excuses for Doug Mccone. I recommend that you send that letter. I recommend if they do have counsel, you send it to their attorney. I recommend you do it certified, and hopefully it will just say, "We request that you come in and explain how you got it." Lastly, about the theft, again, one of the few things that John Rice's memo does establish is that the reason why Mccone and Bowdre, you're going to turn a red light on, and Commissioner Farre's going to get very excited, give me five more seconds. One of the reasons why Mccone and Bowdre would not talk to the solicitor was not the Fifth Amendment fear, okay? They were not afraid of being a witnesses against themselves in any type of criminal proceeding. They gave an explanation, maybe through counsel, maybe not through counsel.
Your time's up, Mr. Sherry.
Yeah, hold on, okay? That the reason they didn't want to do it is because.
Excuse me, your time is up.
Are you upset?
Mr. Sherry, time's up.
Your time is up, Mr. Sherry. Thank you.
The reason they didn't want to speak was because of fear of being sued.
Please let him finish. Let him finish.
Mr. Sherry, your time's up.
We argue about this. This is what makes this Board look better. Just let him finish. We let people.
The fear of being sued is not a constitutional right to not talk, okay? So please, send the letter, have them come in, or at least have the opportunity to. Thanks.
Is there any additional public comment? Okay. I want to go ahead and call the vote on Commissioner Abel's new motion to, Commissioner Abel, you read it, please. Back to everybody.
Well, it's a two-step process to hopefully resolve the issue of the leaked document. First step would be to have Solicitor Rice send a letter to Mr. Mccone and Mr. Bowdre asking that they appear at or before the April 23rd Board of Commissioners meeting to respond to questions as to how they obtained the confidential document. If we don't have further information and can resolve the issue, then at the first meeting in May, this Board will discuss our next steps, which may include a further investigation, which would be at the taxpayer's expense.
Thank you, Commissioner Abel. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. Ayes have it? Okay, on to the next issue. Carfac discussion. Okay, so back several weeks ago, all of the members of Carfac resigned. So we need to figure out what exactly we're going to do with regards to Carfac. I think we wanted to have a discussion and invite our business manager, who works collaboratively with Carfac, to participate in that discussion. Do we want to go ahead and reconstitute Carfac exactly the way it was? And I know that there had been concerns on part of some of the Carfac members as to the way they'd been engaged, the way they were being utilized by the Board, or to inform the Board. You know, are there some, any changes we want to make? I think we definitely need to update the Resolution 201101, which formed Carfac to, at least in the summary that discusses it, indicate that their meetings are televised, which was a change that was made. which was a change that was made. And I think that anyone who'd want to sign up for this committee needs to understand that. So, I don't know, does anyone have any thoughts with regards to this?
Well, just as it relates to this televised meetings, what we talked about, I thought the last time this came up, and prior to the resignations of the Carfac members, was that there's still an ability to have executive session before their meetings. So, something came up tonight, Bill, about audit, right? Not every audit or auditor wants to be televised under certain situations. So, as it relates to televised meetings, it would be like this board. They would still have an ability to have an executive session, talk about certain matters, and then come before, you know, the televised audience. Is that your understanding as well?
Yeah, I think that is what we discussed, that they would have that opportunity. I just think that, for anyone, you know, obviously, the prior Carfac members were not, being televised was not something that they wanted, that they were comfortable with. So I think we...
Four times.
Four times, yeah. But not all their meetings were televised. So I think we do need to at least update this document to reflect that. Bill, I don't know, do you have any thoughts on, you know, you worked closely with Carfac. Do you think there's anything, I mean, it's been a long time, so 2011, it was, they were formed, you know, are there any changes you think that need to be made before we put this out there, asking for new members?
Bill, could I, before you start, just a leading question, if you will. When I review what was going on when we had CBFAC and then Carfac, there were a lot of problems in the township. I think we've come a tremendously long way, so consider and give me your opinion about whether we even need Carfac any longer.
Well, thank you. Yeah, I will start by touching on the audit component. I think that the work that Carfac did on the audit side had a tremendous amount of value add. As we've talked about since 2011, the reason that the Carfac piece of that program was added was to bring the citizens into the audit process from, you know, even another view or another opportunity to hear directly from the independent auditors engaged by the township. So, from that perspective, I think that that part of whatever moves forward is critical. And that doesn't necessarily have to be through Carfac. It can be through working directly with the Board of Commissioners or some subcommittee thereof. But having a citizen or two be part of that, I think adds another layer of assurance to the process that, in any situation, our independent auditors are talking about results in audit, the audit process to three different groups. The administration being one, the Board of Commissioners being the other, and then whoever those citizens may be, being the third. And that just, like I said, adds a level of assurance that anything that is reportable actually is reported. With regard to the other work that Carfac did, I'm a little biased, but I thought it also added a lot of value. I know that when we first started working, as Commissioner Nagel pointed out, there was a lot of easy targets, a lot of low-hanging fruit to attack. And as we, as we cleaned those items up and we hit the big items, a lot of those kind of turned into regular reporting and ongoing monitoring of decisions or policies that were adopted by the boards over the years. And I'm talking specifically there about decisions made with the pension funding, with the OPEB funding, decisions on capital funding, what to do with excess fund balances, and those types of things. And then obviously, the audit comments that existed going back a decade now. I think part of the rub there toward the end was the list of projects being asked to work on. That work was being done, and then it, for one reason or another, just kind of lost steam when it got to the commissioners. And there was a, perhaps a feeling of, well, I'm investing this time as a volunteer, and the work being done was either being dismissed for whatever reasons. So I think if there is some sort of reconstitution, we'll want to be really specific about what it is we want these folks to work on, to make sure that whoever's volunteering their time to provide that to the township is doing so, knowing that the time and the effort they're putting into it is going to be received, one way or another. So, and I do agree that making it clear on the outset to whoever signs up that your meetings are gonna be televised, or at least recorded and aired, is important, because that was definitely a deviation from what the last group had walked in on. So, the next group, whoever that may be, will know going in what the ground rules are and will work accordingly. So I don't know if that really helped, but...
I think that did help.
Okay. I'll stop by saying I'm happy to help in whatever capacity the board decides is appropriate. Because at the end of the day, I think the underlying goal of Carfac was to rebuild the financial reporting trust between the township and the community, because I think some of that was lost there during the firestorm.
Okay, thank you. Are there any commissioners who have any thoughts?
Well, I do. And Bill, I think that what you say is about these committees is a very common theme. A lot of committees, stormwater management among others, feel that they do a lot of work, and then we don't, we don't take everything that they recommend. But that doesn't mean their work isn't valued. The work is valuable, and even if the recommendations are not taken by this board, my view was that their contributions are valued, their recommendations are valued, and that exigent circumstances sometimes call for or dictate a different solution than the ones that they might recommend. And it in no way reflects negatively on their work. And I think that's the case here for Carfac as well. Carfac is the citizens' audit review and a financial advisory committee. So there's two components, the audit review. Now remember what happened. We had some financial misconduct, or perceived misconduct, or questionable conduct, and there were concerns by the public and the Board of Commissioners that there was not enough financial oversight. And that resulted in these additional layers of oversight by citizens who are invested in the audit process. I'm a tax director, a tax lawyer, and on the corporate world, I've worked extensively with quarterly, annual audits, and financial reporting and SEC reporting. So, in the private sector, the way this works, and Bill alluded to it, the auditor works with the company, in this case, the company is the township, and the board of directors, in this case, the Board of Commissioners, is tasked with oversight. The Board of Commissioners has a financial third-party auditor who audits the work of the company, in this case, Bill's work. And we have that direct oversight. Carfac came about because we wanted to have some more professional assistance by the constituents to provide more financial expertise, because obviously, we missed something in 2008. We had an issue at the time. So this was a second layer. So that's the audit element of it. Auditing, if you're doing a financial audit, generally, a financial audit is not a public process. The reason being because, at least in a private company sense, there are oftentimes various positions and interpretations with respect to tax matters or accounting matters that the company is taking. Oftentimes, there's legal opinions that go directly to the position that the entity is making in doing its financial reporting. When an auditor comes in to review that, the company explains that, but oftentimes, the materials used to justify a position are confidential attorney-client privilege and are not subject to public review. I believe that our current operating system of Carfac being subject to the Sunshine Act perfectly provides, in every instance where they need to go into executive session, to be off of the television, they are able to do so, especially when they are dealing with audit review of the financials of the township and any positions or interpretations it may be making with respect to government accounting standards or other financial or tax issues. So I think that we already have it covered. And I think that the current laws and the current rules regarding Sunshine Act cover Carfac and do not need to be modified. On the second element of Carfac, which is a financial advisory committee, that also, I believe, is an advisory committee, and it is perfectly reasonable to have that be subject to televised meetings. And everyone on this board, as I recall, I think, voted for that. And I think that that is good government and transparency. And they too can avail themselves of the executive session if they need to. And I think that there's no reason that they can't. They are interpreting, they are dealing with and making recommendations on millions of dollars of taxpayer money, I think is perfectly acceptable and responsible for us to ask them to do it on television, except when there is an executive session item, which is negotiations with real estate, which is legal issues, attorney interpretations, et cetera. So my view is that Carfac is perfectly operational. I lament that we had the people resign, but we do not need to change Carfac. We should recon, we should add new people and bring it back and restore its complete operation. I do not think the operation was failing. I did not think the operation was wrong. It merely was something that we wanted to have more transparency on. And I think that it should, it provides plenty of opportunity for private discussions for sensitive matters when it's necessary and appropriate.
And Rich, just to follow on that, I think it was fair to the members who decided to step off, because at that time, many, I got calls from a few, not many, but a few, who said that in their private lives, they didn't necessarily want to be televised in a sort of oversight, in sort of in a public way because of what they did for their, you know, their professions. And I think that's fair. Now, we've disbanded it, or it's become disbanded. We have elected now that we want these meetings televised, and now we can have another board reconstituted, and everyone knows the playing field. They know the rules that they're signing up for.
Again, I would just take issue with it for the public and not to be overly precise. My view is that it's not disbanded. It continues on. Right now, it has no members, but we should fill that back out. And to the extent that we do that, you might deem it to be reconstitute. It's not reconstitute, just replacing the members who decided to leave, that's all I'm thinking.
Right. Under the new rules of televised meetings.
Tevising every meeting instead of just quarterly.
Does anybody else have any comments? John, John before. Jake, do you have any comments?
Okay, so, I definitely, I don't disagree. I think we should reconstitute it. I think that it is a good kind of check and balance, you know, for the township. I think that we do need to add, so, in, and John, John stepped out. But in the resolution, so we have attached the resolution what the responsibilities foundation purpose of Carfac is, which is all good. I think we do need to add the fact to this that people, it is televised. And fine, if we want to put in that when there are sensitive issues, they can adjourn into executive session. But what I'd also like to add to this, that I think is missing, is the interaction with the board around collaborating on project ideas, or, you know, getting information from the board as to what they think would be, what the board finds would be useful as we are moving forward. So, you know, supposing, we've talked in several occasions about if we decide to sell the sewers to somebody, you know, is that something that we want them to investigate or something to look at? Like, are there proactive things that we can ask them to do in collaboration with the staff, you know, to benefit the township? And I think that adding something to this somewhere that kind of formalizes that those kinds of discussions, or at least a meeting, or some sort of interaction with the board so that they have direction, that the board can work with them to provide some direction. I would like to see that added to this. So, that's my really only comment. But I have no issue reconstituting it. I think that, you know, I don't think we need to officially change this and vote, I mean, I'd like to see this changed, and what's, this is posted on the township website. I think people need to fully understand. And then I guess would we need to vote on a new resolution if we changed it? I guess our solicitors...
Well, I think the answer is yeah.
Yeah.
Just because what we're looking at is an exhibit to a resolution that was already adopted. So if we change that exhibit, we should probably adopt a new resolution.
A new resolution.
In terms of televising the meetings, I'm looking at the last section under Committee Requirements and Responsibilities. It says, "The meetings of Carfac will be open to the public, held at least quarterly, and will be advertised in the same manner as other township boards and commissions, or committees."
Advertised.
I would defer to John, but I mean, that's basically saying that Carfac, you have to play by the same rules as all the other boards and commissions as directed by the Board of Commissioners, which would include the televising. I'm not sure we need to change this for that piece of it.
Okay.
With regard to the projects, the last bullet point in that same section does say any other projects or tasks assigned to it by the Township Board of Commissioners. The one thing there, and this is a request, I don't think you can write this into an exhibit, but it's just making sure that projects that are assigned are ones that the, there is conviction behind, the board really wants direction on it. It's not, it's not just busy work. It's something serious, and Carfac needs to dig in. Whether the board decides to agree or disagree or go in another direction, that would be the one request, is any tasks or projects assigned are ones where the board is really looking for direction. And again, I don't think you write that into an exhibit. It's more of just a request after working with the last group.
So how do we, how do we formalize that, though? Because I feel like with the prior group, it was definitely not happening. They were not happy with that. And that was part of the disconnect, I think, that they felt with the board.
That was a policy change by the board. I mean, their meetings were always open to the public, and they were always advertised. They just weren't televised. And none of, all of our boards that are televised, there's nothing in any of their guidance documents that talks about televising.
You know, I'm not talking about the televised. I'm talking about the interaction with the Board of Commissioners and gaining direction.
It seems to me this covers it as is.
Well, this is what existed before, and it wasn't happening. So that's what, that's where my concern is.
I would suggest that perhaps it wasn't followed, not that it didn't exist. I mean, we tried to have an annual letter to them, setting out their task for the year, but there were some, there should have been more involvement all through the year, in my opinion. I'd go to maybe three or four of their meetings a year, and there weren't a lot of commissioners attending their meetings.
And I would go from time to time. I think that we did annually, working with Bill, we said, we laid out, we want you to cover these items and provide insight, and we did ask them to do various tasks. ask them to do various tasks. Some of them did become controversial because even the issue you just talked about, let's consider, let's have Carfac consider selling the sewers. And what would the financial impact? Okay, Carfac can do a financial analysis. This is what the net present value of the assets are. This is what the cash flow is. What they don't do is the political analysis. As a political matter, would that be something that would be pursued? That would be for the board. So, those are just different elements. So, they could do a ton of work on that issue and bring it to the board, and the board could say, "No." This is just an example. It's hypothetical. The board could say, "No, we don't want any part of it. Thank you very much." That, Carfac might feel, "We wasted our time." But again, as I said at the beginning, it's not a waste of time. And we gave them a variety of items to look at. Some of them were controversial. Things like excess properties turns out to be controversial often. Look at the cost-benefit of excess properties. And we've done that on the school board, too. What's the financial benefit of getting rid of those? Well, there's always a financial number, but then there's also the esoteric or the other intrinsic value that may not justify it. But I believe that what we have there, description, actually is good, and that we were communicating on the tasks that they had each year, and that they were performing those. So, I think that we did have a good relationship, and we did regularly review the reports that would come back from Carfac. And we took all of it very seriously. We just didn't take every recommendation, which is the same with every board.
Okay. All right. Well, I guess with, yeah. All right. So, can we go ahead and put out there? I guess we are seeking nine members, nine members of the public to reconstitute Carfac.
Just another idea to throw into the mix, I know there are some of the boards and commissions where Board of Commissioner members are assigned to them. The Parks Board comes to mind, where there is constant or required attendance by a Board of Commission member. That might be a way to bridge any communication gap between the two groups and may help in dealing with the projects that are a little bit, the sewer one's an excellent example because there is definitely a financial component, but there is also definitely a policy and political component. So, that may help smooth the line between, so that Carfac, because the one thing that I thought was excellent about the group we had, and I hope that that happens with the next group, too, is that they are not political. They really are a financial group, and that's where their interests lie. So, maybe a commission member at the Carfac meetings can help make sure that those lines don't get blurred.
So, would we then, we could amend, we would amend the appointment goals, I guess, to add a commissioner or two?
Well, I would say generally, the difference is, is we have the finance committee of the whole. So, that means that all of us should go to Carfac meetings. And then what happens is, is none of us go. Right? So, maybe you have, maybe, I don't even know that this is, but maybe to address that, we have a Carfac liaison subcommittee that is three people that's tasked with keeping tabs. That might be something to consider.
Yeah. And that could be the same group as the audit subcommittee if we're going to consider that as moving forward as well.
Okay. Well, in the meantime, so we can, so that the audit subcommittee will be considering at the next meeting, we could certainly add that to this. But in the meantime, we can certainly advertise that we are seeking Carfac members, correct? Okay.
Okay. I was going to say, when's the next Carfac meeting? But we need to get new people. And then we'll set the meeting date. And then I will be there. I will show up. And I will bring beers for everyone, okay?
That may help attendance.
Well, I think the meeting date's already set. I think it's just a matter of getting the people and then telling them when they have to meet.
Assuming we can get the people, right?
So, I guess we will put it out there that we are seeking members for the Citizens Audit Review and Financial Advisory Committee. So, please send your resumes to care of Bob Sinkowski and Bill White here at the Township Building. All right. Thank you for that discussion, gentlemen. She can send her resume.
Madam President, could we have two items to go on the agenda then for the Carfac, being the sale of sewers and cell towers?
All right. Sewers and cell towers?
Yes.
Okay. That sounds good. Is there anyone that objects to sewers and cell towers?
Well, it's just the cell towers. They've already done.
We've done that, yeah.
We didn't, I don't think there was actually heard out, but...
The report was done.
Let's hear them both. Cell towers on private property, right?
Well, if we're going to do that...
We could consider it both ways.
Then we need to have a counseling on the stumbling block to cell towers in the past, and whether there's been any new court decisions.
We could do that, too. But I think on the sale of sanitary sewer system, I think at that time, we'll probably have that information for the board.
Okay. So, there you have it, Carfac, potential Carfac members, two agenda items for your first meeting. Okay. Do we have any reports from Public Works and Engineering? Public Safety, we have a meeting tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night, right.
Meeting at 7:00. Here in this room, 7:00 tomorrow night. Parks and Rec?
Parks and Rec meets Thursday. At that meeting, I'll discuss with them Commissioner Abels and Matt's issues with smoking in the parks and on some of the streets.
Community Development?
No report.
The library, we are actually going to tour tomorrow, the library.
That tour?
It is tomorrow at 5:30. Bob sent us all an email.
5:30?
Yes. Correct, Bob? The Commissioner tour for the library is 5:30 tomorrow. We meet over there, Bob, at the library.
So, we could go over there and then come back for a public safety meeting?
There you go.
What about dinner, though?
Your night is planned.
Rich is going to provide dinner.
We'll order some pizza.
Are they going to have something?
We can order some pizza.
I only eat once a day. That's right in the time.
We will certainly work to accommodate you, Rich. Public Health?
The Board Health met last week, and at that meeting, I also brought up the issues of the no smoking. They've taken it up and are already looking at scientific studies. I mean, obviously, as a Board of Health, they're against smoking, period. But they're doing a job of investigating the public health hazards, outdoor air concentrations, and those kind of things.
Very good. Is there any old business?
I guess, our smoking policy outside, is that going to include vaping? Or what did we come down on the vaping issue?
I think we're waiting for them to give us their recommendations before we make any decision.
No, we suggested vaping and then smokeless tobacco, like dip.
Okay. Is there any new business? Any new business from the SAB? Okay. Then, public participation.
Hi, Baron Gemmer Wayne. Two topics. First, on the public safety meeting, as well as the meeting we had before that, even though it was an executive session, the standing committees and the boards. Can we get agendas for those so that they get prompted by the emails when they get posted to the website? Because like the public safety meeting was not announced at the last Board of Commissioners meeting. So, for a lot of people, this is probably the first that they're hearing about it, because there is no agenda to look at. There is a notice on the website, but unless you're proactively going to that, you're not seeing that. We've had that for community sub-development, so most of this, when we've had standing committees in the past, that's been the practice. And I'm pretty sure the charter would actually cover that, given that it's part of the Board of Commissioners, where agenda needs to be out three days before. So, first comment. Second comment, regarding the combination of two of the topics tonight. The Carfac topic we just had, in conjunction with the Sunshine Act and open records law, let's not have that meeting until we have at least a quorum of Carfac members, because I think it's going to be very important for them, per what Rich was also talking about, when they might legally be able to go into executive session. They're going to be one of the boards or commissions that's going to be most affected by that, and they should have the most knowledge about that.
Good suggestion. Thank you, Baron. Any additional public comment?
Hi, Dan. Danny Boysherry, Wayne. And that will be the last of the levity for these comments, because I was just over there checking my phone in terms of comments that President Barowski made regarding this Mccone and Bowdre investigation, where he said that these men are testifying before the Ethics Board, or speaking to the Ethics Board, and what if it just came in an envelope into one of their mailboxes? Now, goodness, if that turns out to be the contention that they make, that would seem to be an unbelievable and second breach of the confidentiality that envelops the preliminary inquiry, which these ethics complaints that are active are presently in. So, Mr. Barowski, if you've just revealed something that, again, was provided in a confidential preliminary inquiry, and if that turns out to be the situation, if that's the story that they're going with, I think this board needs to take a long, hard look as to whether or not, at a minimum, you should be censuring the president, let alone continuing to allow her to be president. Goodness. I mean, her entire presidency, if that, again, this is hypothetical, if that does turn out to be Bowdre and Mccone's excuse, her entire presidency has had this Exhibit 6 issue. I mean, it's been going on since mid-October. So, the idea that, and again, this does turn out to be the situation, if it turns out that the President of the Board of Commissioners, despite that knowledge, made a statement tonight that was a breach of the confidentiality of preliminary inquiry, and only you know, Lisa Barowski, whether you did that or not, you really do need to take a new look at leadership. But, let's just go now that Lisa Barowski just speculated that that could be what these two men say. And Commissioner Nagel is looking at a blank screen over there. I just bring that to the public's attention. If they do say that, what does one do with that, if these men come in and offer that excuse? I pointed out earlier tonight that that won't save Mccone because four days prior, he again was at that meeting when Martin Heldring was saying that everything involving a preliminary inquiry is confidential. But more importantly, I would like you to all think of this. You get something in your mailbox that you know you shouldn't be in possession of, or at least doesn't appear to be addressed to you. People get that all the time. They get emails that weren't meant to be sent to them, et cetera. What do you do with that? If you're a reasonable person or a thoughtful person, do you take it and attempt to weaponize it against the perceived political opponent? Or do you contact the township and say, "Whoa, I seem to receive this clearly was received in error. I'm not..." Whomever. "I'm not a member of the Ethics Board. I'm not Township Administration. I'm not an attorney." Okay? That's what a reasonable person does, right? If I see a brand-new Porsche parked in my driveway, I don't think to myself, "Neat! Time for a joyride. Mine. I'll use it for whatever I want." That's not how it works. You call the authorities. You alert. Didn't happen with Mccone and Bowdre. Again, if that is the excuse that they use, which would be extremely coincidental with Chairwoman Barowski's comments tonight. Also, one would also think that, again, if it comes in the mail and it's directed to them, wouldn't they reach out to somebody on the Board of Commissioners and alert them to this? One would expect that they would. There's no evidence of that happening in Solicitor Rice's report. But most importantly, wouldn't it be easy for them to tell Solicitor Rice that? "I have no idea how I got the document. All I know is it showed up in the mail." Did they do that? Nope. They refused to talk to Solicitor Rice purportedly on the advice of counsel in terms of fear of being sued. How's that jive with getting something in the mail? I guess we're going to be learning a little bit more in the coming weeks, but Commissioner Barowski, again, to the extent you are speaking on personal knowledge, and again, you're the only one up here that serves on the Ethics Board. You're speaking on personal knowledge as to what you may have learned in a confidential preliminary inquiry.
You have a minute, Mr. Sherry.
Yeah. You might want to think about the ramifications for that, and you're smirking at me, but I would hope that other people up on this board, to the extent you are reaching confidentiality, and you have, of course, the ability to cut me off right now and say, "Mr. Sherry, I was just hypothesizing," and you have not since then, that this board take it seriously. We can't continue to have breaches of confidentiality in preliminary inquiries, if in fact, that is what Commissioner Barowski has demonstrated tonight. Thank you.
Any additional public comment? Okay. Seeing none. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Removed.
Is there a second?
Yes, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night.